Call this meeting to order. This is the, and welcome everybody to the Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. We'll start with community input. And I'd like to remind everybody that community input, we cannot respond to at the time that it's given. We do take it. If it warrants being put on an agenda at a different time, we do that at that point. If it is something about a, an agenda item that we're having on tonight, or the night of, we will take the community input and we will take it under consideration during our discussions, but we do not, in general, ask for community input or audience input in our discussions unless there's some question that we have. There is an, at 7:05, an update about Timbernook Program. 7:45, a public hearing for the Verizon EverSource Joint Pole Location on Church Street. At 8 o'clock, a public hearing for the Underground Storage of Propane at 383 River Road. At 8:15, we will have a joint 2020 town meeting, coordination meeting. The Selectmen FinCom, the Long Term CAPS Requirement Committee, the Municipal Facilities Committee, and the moderator, and maybe the school committee. At 9:15, Town Government Organization Policy and Bylaw Review, as we have every meeting these days. At 9:35, Town Administrators Report. 9:45, the Liaison Reports. At 9:55 minutes, and we will not be having an executive session because we don't have the minutes to review, right? Okay. So although it's on our agenda, it's not happening. Hopefully, we will be adjourning instead at 10 o'clock.
Yay.
So I'm going to really try to keep this meeting moving because we do have a lot of heavy agenda items to discuss tonight. So it being 7 o'clock, is there somebody here for community input? David and Abba? And please identify yourself for the cameras and the TV.
I'm Abba Singap. I'm the Chair of the COA Board. I'm here today to kind of talk about the position we had requested for us outreach social worker, part-time outreach social worker. And we feel that it is a very important staff, position that we really need. I have been involved with counseling aging for the past 10 years, and I have seen how the need has increased over the years. Our current program manager and outreach coordinator Angela, she has been working extremely hard, and she has been with us for all that long. But if one day she decides to leave, we will need to really hire two more people to do what she's doing right now. And she is at a place where she's kind of burning out. We have to support her. A lot of our board members are here in order to support this. And David is here. He can talk in more details about this.
Hi, Abba. Thank you. I'm David Klein. I'm the Director of the Council on Aging. I'm not a town resident. But I also, I wanted to reiterate what Abba was saying. The position from our perspective is not one of a want. It's really, truly a need. You could have said that it was a need four years ago, or three years ago, but we've been putting a Band-Aid on it each year by adding a little bit of capacity through our administrators and giving them additional responsibility. And I'm not sorry that we did that. I think, you know, Angela has passed along parts of what she does to them, and it's built a stronger team, you know, such that if one day she retires, you know, we could possibly hire externally, but we possibly could promote from within. So it's a good thing. It's made the town stronger, I think, in effect. But it, but the part-time positions don't, that are of a wider, broader capacity, don't replace the need on the social worker side with the social worker and outreach expertise that were, that were, this point that we've come to. We were just reviewing something from Minuteman Senior Services a little bit earlier in the day-to-day. It's their 2019, FY 2019 report of the services that they give to the town and comparing it to one from two years ago. And two years ago, they were giving us about $250,000 worth of services, and they break it down by category. I can get it to you guys if you want the soft or hard copy at some point. But this past year, that figure is about 320,000, or 317,000. And one of the big increases was in in-home care of people in Carlisle. They're providing in-home care and care management services. And the increase in numbers is, seems small. It's like, it went up from 23 to 31. But that 23 to 31, that extra 30% or so, 35%, are people that almost certainly we are dealing with on a daily basis, and Angela is dealing with on a daily basis. And it's those, those families that are, I hate to use the word sucking up our time, but it's those families that need the immediate care because one spouse is gone, and now the other spouse, who might have been the original caregiver, you know, needs help to stay in the community. At the same time, if you want us to come back, or if you want me to stay for the FinCom portion of it, I'm happy to stay, or happy to come to the next meeting to give, you know, more facts and figures. But basically, we think that for this, what this position, which might cost $28,000, that we can cover about $10,000 through the Community Chest Grant. And for the first time, we've had discussions within our board about using half of our state grant, the State Formula Grant, which is currently at about $12,000. It used to be $7,000, then $8,000, then $9,000. Now we're up to $12,000. And we think with the 2020 census, once we get past that, that we'll probably get an additional amount from the state because it's based on the number of seniors in town. The number of seniors in town has gone up about 60% in the past 10 years. So it's, chances are, we'll get additional funding. And if we could use, you know, let's pick the figure, half of that amount toward this position, we think that it's finally, it is worth it. So if we can use $6,000 of our $12,000 now toward that position, and maybe if it goes up 25%, and we have $16,000, if we can use $8,000 of our $16,000, I'm using that as an approximate benchmark, but if you get where I'm going. Other towns do use their state grant toward positions. We traditionally in Carlisle haven't because it hasn't been a lot of money. But now that it is becoming more money, it's reasonable to look at it and say, well, is there a real need that you would use that money to fund for? What we've been using it for in the past has just been miscellaneous things.
What would be the balance then between your community chest and half of the?
Well, if we had both of them, that would be $16,000, just to pick an intermediate figure of the $28,000.
Sorry, still looking for a round.
Yeah. So it would be about 55% of what we'd ask for. And you might say, well, you know, could you use less hours of this additional position? But the position, the reason that we're asking for the 19 or 19 and a half, you know, just going up to that, that total part-time threshold, is that we need a critical mass of that person's hours. We need to hire somebody who's willing to come in. And even if they are saying, well, we can only do 18 as opposed to 19 and a half, I mean, totally fine. But we, we don't want to not be able to get somebody qualified.
Okay.
So I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
And also, we have a couple warrant articles that, you know, we were considering on the transportation end, but, but this is our real priority. If we had to sacrifice something, it would be here on the outreach and social work side, rather, and we would manage on the transportation side.
Okay.
Just want you to know. Oh, and lastly, traditionally, and this feeds right into what you're trying to do, I think, as, as both the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and let's get things done a little earlier in the process. Well, the Community Chest, norm, last year of the application deadline was January 31st. This year, and I think it affects not only us, but Board Health a little bit too, this year, the deadline for that application is January 10th. So if we're going to apply for additional funds to them, and they've indicated that it would work, Concord's getting about $38,000. We got $15,000 this past year. If we go up to $25,000, just to pick a figure, we need to know what we're applying for, as opposed to not knowing.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Input?
I would make the meeting public comment.
Please.
I was, once was a member of the COA. I was also a caregiver. Now I'm a need of care. It's not a desirable position. I call up Angela many times, and she responds late at night because she's so busy during the day. Now I think any help she can get be well appreciated. I know that through her, she's, she's a community angel as far as I'm concerned, and a lot of other people feel the same way. And to deny her adequate resources is just beyond my belief. I wish I could still be a caretaker and not a caretaker. The other time it's her.
Caregiver and not a caretaker.
Life is catching up to me. So all your help you can give, I certainly would appreciate, and I'm sure a lot of elderly people that I know would also appreciate. Remember, you are also getting older. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none.
Nope, she raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Please come, yes, because that microphone is for the cameras so that people who are watching at home can hear what you're saying.
I'd better not have the camera on me.
So I need your name, your name and your address.
Okay. I'm Hannah Laura Munson, and I have been living for 57 years on 48 Wildwood Drive. And I have to say, I had a husband with dementia, and anytime I called Angela for help, sometimes just to talk, she was always available. And if she wasn't, she would call me again late at night. And I am just really, really worried about her being, doing, being the kind of person that she is. She wants to do an excellent job, and she always has, but I think it's now taking it out on her health, and I would hate to see something happen to this absolutely wonderful person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No. I appreciate all that input. We have an update about the Timbernook Program. Come and join us, please. We have to drag up a chair. Or you can, you can stand there or drag up a chair. Depends upon how long your presentation is.
So good evening. I'm Sherri Kennon, and this is.
I'm Aggie Lindemann.
We're here from Timbernook, which is a program of Minuteman Arc. And we wanted to give a quick update on our program that we've been running in the woods, and asked to extend hours for the summer, to run five weeks of summer programming. And I don't know if you all got the handout or not. Did you get it with the dates?
Yes.
The proposed dates? Okay. So we ran two successful sessions this fall, along with one evening session. They were attended very well by a lot of Carlisle residents as well that really enjoyed it. And we have a couple of deadlines we have to meet, which is why we're coming now and asking about summer. Acton Bucksboro, or Acton, has a camp fair that's very wide, widely attended from all the surrounding areas. And that is January 23rd, and so we really would like to have our dates and our place in place for marketing. And then Timbernook itself opens up registration on February 7th. So we are here asking permission for these five weeks of programming for the summer. And that's why we're here, and to answer any questions anyone else might have.
How's the snow been doing?
We haven't been out in the snow yet, but we do have snow programming. But yes, we haven't been out since it's snowed yet.
Just some cold rain.
Yeah. Yeah, we did have some cold rain, and the kids did great. Moms do.
Tim, have, do you have any input from the point of view of the, you know, Town Hall, impact on Town Hall, and, or anything else like that?
Well, it has really impacted operations here at Town Hall. They've been very easy to work with. I know they were very responsive to the issue that Nathan had raised.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
Number of residents, so.
I'm going to bring that up.
Yeah.
I understand the timing issue.
It happened, and that's okay.
Wanted to add the time for the summer.
Right.
Believe it or not, you have to.
I just wanted to know if there was anything else that we needed to be looking at or thinking about.
And has the location worked out for you?
Yes, it's been wonderful. And we did move from the original location back over to, kind of by the pond there. And I think it'll actually be great with the younger kids, we'll stay up closer to the pond area, or if we have children that have more mobility issues. With the older children, we will probably branch down a little further down that hill there, where they have a little more free rein to move around in that area. So.
I have just a couple of questions about some of the specifics in your marketing blurbs.
Yes.
Just thinking about, trying to do a little more due diligence about what might be going on, you know, in the town, on the town-owned land. Sounds wonderful, all of the programs you've got outlined here. I'm just thinking so about the storybook one. It says, talk about, it talks about creating a life-size circus. So, or, and then there's another one where it talks about creating an elaborate Ghostbusters headquarters. And another one where it says, creating their own life-size vehicles and create elaborate track systems throughout the woods. So I just want to ask you to describe that a little more, and also what, how permanent they are, or how much you're using materials from the, the forest, and sort of.
Right.
What impact that will have.
So, nothing that we do is ever permanent. Now, when we do run, like, a five-day camp during the summer, like, a Monday through Friday, there are times, if we are building things, that the children are working on, and they really want to see it through to Friday. So those would stay up Monday through Friday, but then they would be completely cleared out at the end of that. We don't damage any of the trees or the nature. That is a big part of our mission, is teaching the children to appreciate nature in the woods and being outdoors. I don't have all the distinct details, that is, the curriculum that is written from Headquarters, and they gave that to us as a teaser of what's coming. And we don't even ourselves yet have, we should have it by the end of January, but we don't even have all the details.
But just for instance, we had a, our nightly program for, we were creating bowling alleys. And all that entailed was, we had some gutters, and some PVC pipes, and some boxes. And most of that construction was using duct tape and boxes. And actually, the goal is for all these, all these parts to be loose part, because what happens is there's supposed to be a transformation, and it's supposed to be, you know, imaginative play. So those bowling alleys actually became robot gear by the end of the evening. And so the goal really, especially for us, for the setup and pickup, to be kind of malleable and sort of easy to break down.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And there's one other piece in here about, let's see, creating, designing their own art pieces, creating art exhibits, and selling the merchandise at the end of the week to paying customers. Is that something you're thinking will happen there?
Well, what, I think what they mean, and again, we don't have the details on the programming yet.
Okay.
But keeping in line with what Timbernook has done in the past, it's usually like selling to the parents, so they would be creating different art pieces throughout the week. And then on Friday, there's, I'm guessing there's going to be an art show where the parents come, or they might even buy themselves. And we do a lot of currency, so like, leaves can become currency, little wood chip cookies can become currency, and then the kids will buy and sell from each other. So that's the type of thing that we're, we're looking at.
Okay. Great. That's helpful.
Imagine, commercial enterprise.
Yeah, no, it's not, no.
Right.
Again, it, it all comes back to imagination. We're trying to get the kids away from, you know, actual money and actual things and using their imagination and.
Yeah. It, I think it might be helpful for us as a board just to have the, once you get the more defined, or you know what you're actually planning to do, you know, for each of these sessions, I think we prob, it would make sense to give us a copy of that.
I would be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Happy to do that. And we also have a lot of, each site has a lot of individual freedom to work within the guidelines of the curriculum, because we have places in Florida, so they don't have snow. We have places in New Zealand, and Australia, and in England, and so you do also have a lot of leeway to make it so it's perfect for your site.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds great.
Is there any way you can move the cutoff age from 12 to 80?
Well, you know, I, and there, I have some ideas for that, actually. I got to get it kicked off really nicely.
Yeah.
And I see we've got a suggested motion here. I'm just wondering if we want to, it describes the dates that you've given us, but I also noticed that you said something about a staff training week, possibly, June 22nd to 26th?
Yes.
So I'm wondering if we should include that in the motion.
Well, this is a period, though.
That's what I mean. We'd have to add.
The June 22nd would be inside of that.
No, because that's July.
Oh, this is July, duh.
Yeah.
Right. Oh, so make it from July. Just change it from July 6th to June 22nd. 6/22. Okay.
Ready for motion?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the use of the Conan property for five weeks during the summer. Actually, it's going to be more than five weeks now.
Yeah.
It's going to be like, eight weeks.
Yeah, or seven weeks.
For the Timberdook Sensory Nature Programs, beginning 6/22/19, and ending on 8/7/2019, subject to a certificate of general liability, showing proper insurance coverage, and naming the Town of Carlisle as an additional insured.
Don't you mean 2020? Oh.
Yes, we certainly do.
2020. You're absolutely right.
Thank you very much.
Maybe you shouldn't include the 80-year-old.
I don't know. I think she might resemble that incineration.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing the program here. I think it's really.
Well, you're more than welcome, and we want to say thank you to the, to the Board and to the town for sharing your beautiful woods with us and for all the children.
It's our pleasure, really.
Good. Thank you.
Seven forty-five is the public hearing, so I'm going to wait. Do you want to just go ahead and do the policy? Or do you?
Sure. No, whatever you want.
Let's do the policy, because I think we can knock that right out.
Yep.
That's number six. We have two policies. Policy number 14, payroll procedures. Tim, is that what is currently happening? The, this policy that was written in '78? Do we, do the heads of fire, police, and public works departments, and other departments of the town employing non-school personnel provide a record of time work cards to us? To you, in specific?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
Okay, so this is still.
Everyone does a bi-weekly timesheet.
This is still current?
It is. I mean, it probably could be.
Maybe the language.
Typeface looks a little old.
Yeah, well, I know. Yeah, we, yeah.
But it is still.
It still happens.
And each time card is signed by both the employee and the department head?
Yes.
And procedures become, okay, well, I think we just need a, a motion to.
Maintain it.
To reaffirm.
Reaffirm.
I move that the Board of Selectmen reaffirm the policy on payroll procedures that was originally established on June 7th, 1978.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That was one.
Sorry?
That was one year old.
You were one.
That was one.
That's disgusting.
I keep on telling you, I'm old enough to be your mother.
Well, technically, I was closer to one and a half.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Another policy down. Then the next policy is the one about inventory. Approved the establishment of a fixed asset inventory for the Town of Carlisle on the recommendation of Thomas P. Crane Auditor. And from what I understand, we do have this, this inventory, but it is now mandated by the state, and so this policy is no longer.
It's a federal requirement now.
Or is it a federal requirement?
The town doesn't need, really need to have a policy.
So we don't need this policy anymore.
We do maintain a fixed asset inventory, but it's a federal requirement. It's part of the audit.
So I'd like to have a motion to, to delete this.
I move that the Board of Selectmen delete the Carlisle Town Policy on Inventory from November 7th, 1979.
Yeah, that's policy number 15. Okay. There's a, motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll bring another couple next time.
Right.
Town Administrators appoint, report.
Sure. Happy to start on that. The first item in my report is for the Board to declare the warrant open for the annual town meeting, which will be held on Monday, April 27th, 2020, at the town election the following Tuesday. As the goal is, you would open the warrant this evening. It would be closed at the second meeting in January, kind of an earlier cutoff than in previous years. We already have kind of early indicators from departments as to what articles they'll be proposing, but we talked about a firm deadline at the end of January. So by opening the warrant tonight, we can, we can do that by the end of January, and then you'll know, the Finance Committee will know what the universe of articles, you know, especially financial articles will be.
You're right.
So if you vote that motion, that would be appreciated.
I move that the warrant be opened for the submission of articles for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, which should be held on Monday, April 27th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And also attached to my report, you may have seen this from the Planning Board or other boards, but we, we have the 2019 subsidized housing inventory from DHCD. I don't think really any changes from the 2017.
Okay, I was going, that was one of my questions.
Isn't, is that correct, Barney? Is it?
Correct.
So no change from previous words?
I wish we had, but no.
3.39% is the.
Well, at least we didn't lose any, because there was the two at the Stony Brook that we're worried about, right?
Yeah, there, it's interesting, there's still counting two at Stony Brook, at Rocky Point, but.
At Rocky Point. That's how I meant.
But really, one of them is not occupied. That's the one that we're working on, getting a lottery set up to fill.
Okay, but we could, the problem, the thing is that we could.
Yeah, it is still, yes, it's still an affordable unit.
Lose it if we don't, if we didn't get the setup.
Right. My one question about this report, the inventory from them, is that if you look at the Carlisle Village Court line, right at the top, the first line, it says affordability expires 2017. So what does that mean?
Well, the way the law used to read, it was never in perpetuity to begin with. It was only like 15 years, and then renewable, or whatever. And the, the thing is that these, since these are rental, it doesn't matter whether they're affordable or not at this point, I think, for the SHI.
Because it's funded by HUD, so I'm assuming it still has to be HUD-eligible, but.
Yeah, I, I want to say we hired, I forget what the name of the attorney was, because this whole thing came out where we could have actually used Town Council, but we paid somebody to, to deal with the paperwork surrounding Village Court. I can, I can look back into it, or look into it, look back into it. I'll, I'll look into it, because I was actually on the stuff at that time, right? But yeah, we hired an attorney, something specifically for Village Court, because, yeah, paperwork needed to be updated. But yeah, I can, I can figure out if that had to do with this.
Okay.
Oh, what was that?
I think it was right around 2017.
Yeah, probably, I was going to say, probably 17.
Because you, were you on, I don't, I don't think anybody was on the board yet.
No.
I think it was pretty much right when I came in, you know, and it was projecting for the next year. I wish I could remember the attorney's name.
O'Donnell.
Yeah, Kathleen O'Donnell. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's the one. Yeah, Kathleen O'Donnell, yeah, 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 that's the one, yep, yeah. Hey, Timber members. Yeah, so I, well, you might have even been at that meeting, but I'll, I'll look into it, because, um, yeah, I know it was, it was something that we could have actually at Town Council do, but, um, Elizabeth had suggested we use Kathleen because we'd used her in the past. Um, so yeah, I'll, I'll go back on my emails.
And, um, I just, I got a copy of this too, and it just, on the last page of their letter, you know, item six, it says, "If you have no changes, please confirm your inventory is correct by writing 'No Changes' and return the inventory page." So who, who would do that?
That's a good question.
Well, I could do it on behalf of the Board.
Okay.
If it passed, it was the housing coordinator.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if it-
Yeah, would you coordinate, though, I think with the Chair of the, the Trust, I think still is the better way to go.
Okay, okay. Cause I know Gretchen had gotten this, right? This originally came to-
The Planning Board got it, yeah, simultaneously.
Planning Board, so-
Yeah, I think it goes out there.
I didn't know if they were thinking they were gonna send it back in, but-
I'll check with them, but I think we can certainly do that.
Okay, great.
Uh, the next item in my report, the town has been awarded a Maya Safety Grant in the amount of approximately seven thousand dollars for the DPW to purchase a trench box for use at the Green Cemetery. And that, that'll, obviously will make excavations much safer, it's kind of a-
You gotta tell us what trench box is.
Yeah, it's those metal sites, right? So it prevents the excavation.
Oh, from falling in. Ah, yeah, 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 okay.
Hopefully, nobody's going into the hole, right?
Well, no, but still.
Not before their time, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh-
That's very good news.
Yeah, that's, that's good news, and also, uh, the Chair had asked, uh, for a note on this, uh, number of Boards, Committees, individuals receiving questionnaires from the Master Plan.
Yeah, I was wondering if we shouldn't be doing this as a board.
Yes, that was my question.
I think it's kinda odd to be doing it as, because I got this, obviously, at home, and I thought we really should be doing it as a board, but we can't, I don't see how we can do that by December twentieth.
Unless people sent you individually, I mean, we didn't really do goals for this year, did we? We never, um-
Well, we didn't finish them, we started them and we didn't finish them.
Is Civic Moxy scheduling, and have they talked with you about scheduling an interview with the Board?
No.
Cause the Board is on a list.
A series of meetings with, with, uh, town officials and decision makers, I think at the middle part of January.
Okay, well, maybe that's when we just put our-
But if you wanted to send comments to me, then I could combine, compile them, that would avoid an open-meeting law issue.
Right, that's how we'd have to do it.
If you wanted to do that.
Do we wanna do that, or just wait until we have this interview with Civic Moxy?
Personally, I'd rather have an open discussion of it, rather than us giving, you know, individual remarks.
Right.
Uh, so unfortunately, we will not be participating in this, because they didn't give us enough time to get it on the agenda and have a discussion about it, which I think is the way it should have been handled.
Okay.
Maybe then, though, we should, some, somebody, maybe, Tim, you would do this for the Board, is to reply to Civic Moxy and say that, um, we are assuming that we would like to have a discussion with them as a, yeah, as a board, to have a discussion about this.
Discussion.
I suppose if they put it on January fourteenth, we, of course, we haven't, that's starting to fill up.
It is. We, we could, I don't know the date of the-
Or maybe the end of January, is, is I remember the, is anybody here from the Planning Board? I mean, from the Master Plan besides me?
No.
No. Um, as I recall from the schedule, I think they're doing the gathering of information, you know, input from people through the end of January.
Yeah, yeah. And the meetings would be, I think it's about mid-month, the fourteenth to the sixteenth.
Yeah, so this was to try to just reach more people than they might be able to interview, or to get some things in writing.
Then I don't feel so badly.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think we just need to let them know that we cannot do this-
Let them know that you intend to make comments, but-
As a body before, yeah, end of January.
On the twentieth, but we will-
And, um, we definitely wanna have some input, but we, we wanna have it as a body, not as individuals.
Okay. I'll let them know.
Well, we may have individual input, but then we should not be speaking for the Board as a individual, which is, you know.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then the next item, in appointing the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. We failed to specify a term for the committee, so-
It's indefinite.
In perpetuity.
So if we could, if the Board could revote that, and the expiration date should be June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following individuals, David Friedman, three oh one Hutchins Road, Debbie Geltner, eighty Cranberry Lane, Steve Hinton, six eighty-four E Street, Rhonda Michaud, fifty Hart Farm Road, Amy Smack, one fourteen Red Pine Drive, Sally Zalinski, three eighty-four Acton Street, and Mary Zoll, two twenty-five School Street, to serve on the Twenty Twenty Carlisle Open Space and Recreational Plan Committee for a term to expire June twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Should be the Twenty Twenty-two Carlisle Open Space.
Yeah, we'll just leave that out, yeah.
Any further discussion? No smart remarks?
Where's Nathan?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so we'll be meeting December twenty-fourth.
There will not be meetings.
I'm sorry, we're not being meeting on the twenty-fourth. Right, what was on the list, yes, no meeting.
And then the two January meetings there, we could add, actually, we talked about, uh, maybe, Barney, do you wanna?
The transfer station on the fourteenth.
Give a preview of what we picked about?
Yeah, well, this can be our liaison report. Um, so following up the conversation we had here two weeks ago, um, the working group met, uh, just the other day, and, uh, we took to heart the suggestion that we should have some opportunity for people i- in town to provide input into any proposals around changing the swap shed or even other issues with the transfer station. So, we thought, why not, uh, do that at a Board of Selectmen meeting? And I don't know what the right format is, but, so that it could be more, is, what's, what's the right term for a part on the agenda that could be a-
It's a hearing.
Okay.
Because basically that's-
Because we wanna have some back and forth.
Normally, we do not have public input during our meetings, but if we're having a hearing, then we are inviting public input, so it would be a hearing.
So if we could schedule a portion of that meeting as a hearing, um, or, yeah, and, and Gary Davis said he would be here, you know, the, our DPW chief, and it'd still be nice if we could do it earlier, earlier on the agenda rather than later.
Okay, no, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Transfer station, presentations about the Gleason Library Strategic Plan, warrant article requests.
Right, we talked about scheduling some of those for January.
We talked about Board of Health.
So we can get them in. Yes, yeah. Exactly.
So we sit fourteenth for Board of Health.
Okay. No, I think you're right. Move that up.
And on the twenty-eighth, more presentations about the warning, warrant articles.
Now hopefully, we close the warrant at the end of that meeting, having heard from everybody that's proposing.
Anyway, we may hear, yeah.
And there's, but we show Board of Health requests on the twenty-eighth.
I just made a note that we're gonna move that up to the-
We are, okay.
Fourteenth, I had it on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
All right, and that's, that concludes my report.
Excellent.
What we got here, it's almost, no?
Yeah, no, I, um-
Are there any other liaison reports we could do?
Well, we listed the minutes.
Okay.
Alan and I sent in some edits. I don't know if anybody else had any, um-
They were all pretty much editorial, yeah.
Ditsy is what I would say. I wouldn't say they were editorial, I think they were all ditsy. They were commas and, and colons and, uh, Ts instead of Ps, or whatever.
I had one sort of substantive comment on page four of the minutes, up at the top. It was, so the, um, the, uh, kind of update that I put, uh, had written up that we all received, uh, has, is included in its entirety in he, in the minutes, which is fine, but, um, because when this gets posted, I think it might be confusing to folks that read it, because it says number three, that schedule, the change is scheduled to take effect the week of January sixth. Well, we're not gonna do that, because we wanna have this open hearing, and so I don't know what's the right way to, I mean, we could just change it to-
It's proposed.
It's proposed. The, the change is proposed to take effect, and then it changes, that's not a problem, because it was only proposed.
Okay.
There can be many a slip between up and lip, so we'll just put proposed instead of scheduled there.
Okay.
Unless we'd rather-
And then, no, no, and then the next line said, it was agreed by the Board that a public information session should be held prior to, I guess you wanted, to implementing, did you have that in there?
That's already been amended.
Okay, cool. All right, great.
Yeah.
I move the minutes of November twenty-sixth be accepted as amended.
Second.
But, sorry, no, it's just, so I, we had the discussion that it would take place that week, right? But then we discussed afterwards that we should have the, so we did actually say that.
Yeah, but it's, it's clearer if you just say-
No, I know, but, but shouldn't we just put in something else afterwards that, you know, maybe just saying, "Further discussion"?
Based on further discussion at the meeting, we, right, because I don't want, um-
Right, because we, we, we did say it, right? And then we talked about it more, and then we changed it, right? So, I mean, we didn't, so that, that, yeah, I mean, if, I think we should add something that says, you know, um, I don't know, just something along the lines of, you know, um, so it was agreed upon by the Board that an information, yeah, so you know, after, yeah, after discussion, you know, the Board agreed that, you know, um, what, what was the wording you used before?
A public information session should be held?
Should be held, right, but prior to implementing the new plan, um, so the Board decided to postpone the swap shed change, or-
Proposed changes would take effect later?
Yeah, exactly, just something like that, yeah, 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 sorry, my brain's not working, but, but yeah, just-
So the proposed changes will take effect later.
Exactly, yeah, because we did, we did say that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so we can't really change what we said, we just-
Well, in fact, it says here, it was agreed by the Board, a public information session would be held prior to implementing the new plan.
Exactly, but the, but this is the actual order that it came in. Sorry to be nitpicky, but this is the actual order that it, so we changed our mind.
Yes.
It doesn't mean we should change what we said before, we should just state that we changed our mind.
Well, you mixed up two things. You mixed up what the report of the committee was with the Board activities, with the Board-
Because this was the report from the working group.
Right.
Up through number three.
That got inserted into the report.
Oh, I got you, got you, got you.
See, so, I don't know if that's why, um-
Oh.
See, so starting at the beginning of the, the page in front of it, number three, where it says swap shed, all of that text up through the top of page four.
So that's part of that, right?
Part of the report, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so, but maybe we still have to make it more clear-
Yeah.
That number three was part of the report.
Right.
After receiving this report, it was agreed that-
Yeah, that's probably a good way to say it.
After, after receiving, after reviewing this report.
It was decided that we shouldn't implement this so quickly, or needed to have the public information session.
Right, or just, you know, it, it was agreed by the Board that, yeah, public information session should be held prior to implementing number three of the new plan.
Yes, that's what I-
Well, it's really-
But it's really all of the whole plan.
Yes, it's all the previous stuff.
Prior to implementing it.
Yeah, prior to implementing it.
So, so then, let's just be clear then, so, um, the January sixth, um, date, uh, will not be publicized.
Right, yeah, 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 there you go.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's part of the, right, from the-
Yeah, so what we're talking about now is really-
So that's all we need to put at the end of that sentence.
Yes, yeah, no, exactly, right, no, that, okay.
Okay, so we have three, we have the next sentence, which stands, and then we just put January, uh, it was decided that January sixth date will not be publicized.
Right.
As a result of this discussion.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Jen?
Okay, sorry.
Sorry. No, I should be the one saying, sorry.
No, no.
But you know what I mean?
No, absolutely.
Yes, yeah.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded and a discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven forty-five. We have a public hearing. Back to the right section.
What you gonna, it should be, should be in there?
It's in there, it's in there, I'm just not in it. All right, uh, we are having a public hearing on a joint pole location at Church Street and Carlisle School, and I will read the, uh, legal notice, um, that was posted in the Carlisle Mosquito on December sixth. The Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen have scheduled a hearing on Tuesday, December tenth, at seven forty-five PM at the Town Hall Park Room, located at sixty-six Westford Street, Carlisle, Mass, on the joint petition of Horizon New England Inc., EverSource Energy, and Star Electrical, request to locate a pole, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by the petitioners along and across the following public way, Church Street, although it says Church Street here. Install one pole at the corner of Church Street and the entrance to the Carlisle Public School. So, um, our public hearing is now open.
Okay.
So we have any petitioners here, like John DeCock, or anybody else?
Jonathan, you could kick it off for us, and then we've got someone here from EverSource.
EverSource, or anybody else? Okay, come forward. Okay.
We've only ever met by email.
Oh. Okay, no, you have to come, we have to come closer.
We need you in the mic, or else pull a chair up.
Chair, okay.
Here, why don't I take, um, and then, why don't you take that one?
Use the microphones?
All right, so for the record, Jonathan DeCock, one thirty Oak Knoll Road, representing the Energy Task Force.
And?
Steve Conti, representing, uh, the EverSource.
Great. Okay, would you just describe briefly the, um, project that we are hearing about?
This is an electric vehicle and charging station infrastructure program, um, the EverSource, which is being funded by the State of Massachusetts, DPU, to install, uh, public charging station infrastructure in our service territory around the state, and, uh, for, you know, applicants who are, uh, qualified under our program. The town, uh, applied in September, and we are now working through the design phases and getting ready to hopefully begin construction sometime soon, um, and to bring service across the street to the parking lot at the school, we'll need to go across Church Street and to, uh, set a new pole.
Okay, well, I had understood that we were gonna have this underground. Will this be done underground at a later date? Or will this, is it a permanent, this permanent installation this way?
Uh, this will be permanent across the street, and then from, uh, once we install that new pole, we'll go underground to the charging station infrastructure itself.
And was that always the plan?
That was not always the plan. The reason it changed was because we were trying to get this done in time to use our Green Communities grant, and that means we need to do it in the winter, going underneath Church Street in the winter would obviously annoy the plows, if nobody else, um, so it's not, you know, very good to patch. So, EverSource came up with an alternative, which is we can run an overhead line across the street, and then go underground from there. So we will still have to patch the school parking lot, but that's not as big a deal, because we know we're repaving that, and we can do a temporary patch.
And there are, are there already telephone poles down that street?
There are.
There are? It's not already on?
It's on the side of the street, yeah.
Do you have any questions? You look like you have one.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like the, I don't like it being a permanent thing across the street. But, I, why can't we just repatch it in the spring? Why can't we do it, patch it? I mean, they pull up enough stuff throughout the winter anyway, right, and just repatch it in the spring? I mean, I know it'll cost the town something, right, so it will be part of our green community after what? You know, as opposed to having a wire across the street?
Um, I think we're just doing it for the sake of time, just to, uh, get the installation complete, uh, sooner than later, so that we can use the Green Communities funding, that I was made aware there is a deadline for. And we were, we're hoping to get an extension on that, but we'd like to get the installation complete this winter.
Okay, so you couldn't do the installation if it goes underground, is basically what you're saying. There is a time-
Until the springtime.
Right, so it really has nothing to do with it being winter, just there isn't time.
Well, no, it does have to do with it being winter, um, so I don't know if our community has this, but most communities have a drop dead date of about December fifteenth, of no more opening public ways, because you can't patch them properly.
Nope.
So we don't have that.
Maybe it's one that we, maybe it's one of the policies we should be having, and we have all these other lousy policies that we don't need, but-
But, you know, I just, I, I see us kicking ourselves in the butt.
This, this is what I was asking about. This, this is what I was asking about.
Down the road for, you know, no pun intended, because it's just, you don't want, I mean, we're trying to get rid of wires up, right? And now we're saying, hey, let's put one up.
I completely agree.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, so is there, but. Couldn't you go back and do it underground, that'll let you date?
Well, so, yes, but who would pay for that? Right, and so once EV Make Ready has put their wire in.
Right, it's done.
And the station is done, they have to come back and put it underground. And so just so you guys understand the timeframe requirements, right? So our Green Communities grant officially expires in May of 2020, however, we are as a community not allowed to apply for grants.
Until we stop them.
As of essentially sometime early in February, they haven't set the date yet, but approximately February first, if the project is not complete. So we need to get this approved, get everything done by February first, which is extremely difficult, right?
Yeah.
Just from the timeframe to begin with. But if we don't make it in time, then the town loses our eligibility to apply for any Green Communities grants for next year. So we're struggling to try to make that date, even though it's like nearly impossible. So the Energy Task Force has said the right thing to do is essentially treat this like the bird in the hand, we have this one all set, let's push this one through rather than continue to delay and guaranteed not make it to try for additional money. So, so we're basically trying as best we can to get it done in the time required, even though, you know, under utilities, North Town Governments move at a very high rate of speed.
Well, what's the best guess, I guess, or the likelihood that it will be able to be completed in order to meet the timeframe you're describing? Because it would be a shame to go ahead and authorize doing the wire above ground and then not be, not have it be complete, uh, even having gone that route. I mean, do you have any sense of, what are we, are we talking about fifty-fifty, are we talking about eighty?
Slim chance we could get it finished by the end of January, the whole project and chargers in the ground and everything, um, but I think that with our EverSource relationship with Green Communities and if we present to them kind of a, our plan and how everything is all lined up, the infrastructure, the construction started, we have the charging stations purchased through this funding, then we're hoping that they'll just accept that.
So then why don't we just put it underground? I, I, I don't, I don't understand what the.
Well, yeah, so I guess the, the choices that, that fall before us, right, or you guys don't have another meeting until January. So if we don't approve this, then either the project is dead or we agree that we're not gonna try for grants in 2020 because we can't get it approved January fourteenth and then have it done by February first, there's like no chance of that, right? So if we don't approve it tonight, then either the project's dead or we go ahead and forego any possibility of grants in 2020 and go ahead and, you know, ask them to come back for, uh, what is it, a roadway opening permit?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In January. So those are the three possibilities.
Well, I, okay, the, I, I mean, we've had meetings before, you know, in the middle of the day, right, for one thing.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I honestly, I, I, I never make a mistake if we, if we brush it, you know, I mean, I, yeah, the right way to do it is to do it underground, plain and simple, you know?
So, but, did I hear you say either way, that you could do it underground now?
Well, um, I, as far, I thought, I was under the impression that there was a moratorium on street opening, just in the wintertime.
But, yeah.
Not in this town, so, so is it, would it take longer to do it if you were going underground versus the overground?
I think if it were, you know, middle of summer, uh, going underground would still take longer, just because we'd have to get a grant of location to cut through that public way and that's, usually takes up some time.
And who does that here? That's a.
It's a hearing.
It's us, but that's what we're saying we would do in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, we'll come here and do it.
Right, probably wouldn't even have to show up, well.
Yeah.
Well, it depends, I mean, so I, I guess you guys had previously asked for other underground work, that the company supply a bond that makes sure that they're gonna, you know, complete the roadway.
Right, right.
So they would need to, you know, get all that worked out. You guys would also need to have them explain to me what they're gonna do to manage traffic on Church Street while it's opened up, because it's a narrow road, and they don't think you're gonna get traffic to go around it in the road, which means they're gonna have to go through the school parking lot, right? So, and there's more logistical.
Or you detour the street, I mean, it's a one-way street, right?
Yeah, you could detour the street completely, but then we do have to get it done by May or we'd lose the grant money completely and then, you know, if we've signed everything up, then the town's on the hook for about ten grand, right?
Right, but he, he also said that they have a relationship with Green Communities and.
There's no way that their Green Communities will, I mean, we could go and ask for another extension, I suppose, but that would be our second extension.
But if, if we gotta get one any, okay, so now I'm thoroughly confused, I mean, he just said that it's not gonna be completed, it's very unlikely that going overhead it would be completed and, and they would ask for an extension.
No, the, that's, it's, if we don't get it done by, I think by January thirty-first essentially, then if we continue to go forward with the project, we'd lose the ability to apply for 2020 grants. That's what we, the actual same grant.
Okay, but, Steve, Stephen? But Stephen just said he didn't think it would be done by.
Right, so.
Even over, even overtime.
Even overhead, I mean, there's a slim chance.
Yeah, but.
So, yeah, so I'm confused too, so why?
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so what, okay.
What I'm hearing is is it's likely you're, we're not gonna be able to apply for a grant.
Right.
Anyway.
Yes.
So.
So why not wait and put it underground?
Exactly.
Where it ought to be.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be difficult here.
Yeah, we really are, we're very sympathetic to this.
Yeah.
Whole program.
Right.
It's just that we, um, we feel that the town would be even more sympathetic and more in support if we don't, you know, screw it up.
Well, and putting, do what's the best, putting it underground is a better approach than above ground.
Right, so, yeah, then we'd have to send them back to adjust the plans, get your new plans.
Well, this isn't really much of a plan, I mean, it's, I mean, you could just say, you, you take out the thing that says pole and just say that's how it's gonna go underground. I mean, it's, you know, this, this, I, yeah.
Yeah, you just redline that.
Yeah, basically, I mean, you know.
That's why you leave.
Yeah, where, where's my, where's my.
No, we really are not trying to be difficult.
No, I just.
But, um, if, if you were to tell us that there was a hun, you know, no problem, we will have this done and finished by May and, you know, um, and the only way we can do it is to have the, I think we would be more sympathetic to that, but if there's not, if, if there's a huge chance that even with that pole, we're not gonna get it done, we're wondering why should we take that risk?
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I understand, and understanding where you're coming from is frustrating, is all get out.
So, yeah, but I mean, we've been working on this since July.
Yeah, and.
And, you know, it's impossible to get things through, right? So, you know, the school committee's been very supportive, you know, members here and them too, so.
Well, and, and I, I hope you're hearing us say that we'd be, it wouldn't be difficult and we'd be happy to do it, have a, have a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Right.
Uh, before the holidays.
We can be on very short notice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the public hearing requires what?
We could advertise it one time.
Advertise, the deadline is advertise it certain number of days in advance in the paper. Advise all the abutters, so it's not that easy to do.
No.
Yeah, but honestly, if people didn't come, is any, is there anybody here for this?
Yeah.
Other than you two? So, I mean, if people didn't come for a thing above, I don't think they'd come for, I mean, yeah, obviously you can't say that, but, you know, with a hundred percent, with a hundred percent certainty, but I think people would be more willing to say, hey, wait a second, you know, if it's gonna go underground and I never see it and I never have to worry about it, that's one thing, if it's, you know.
But if you, if we put a thing in, in the paper for hearing next week, okay.
How much, how many?
We could make a decision.
Right, it could go into the mosquito tomorrow and.
How many days do you have to give?
Well.
A week, seven, seven days or?
Yeah, but.
Seven calendar days?
It's just a three month.
Right.
One week, yeah.
Nothing's gonna happen before then anyway.
Right.
We happen to have someone closely connected with the mosquito here in the audience.
We could have pressed about noon tomorrow.
Yeah, so if we wanted to put in a notice about public hearing, we could get that in.
And what would you need from EverSource before then? Anything or just, would you give them just carte blanche, you know, have a fun time ripping up the road? You know what I'm saying?
Well, our, um, we've got a rights group who, uh, once the work order for this new service hits a certain point, which it's, it's still in design, so it honestly hasn't even hit that point yet, which is why they're not here and I am, but, um, uh, they'll typically get in touch with you folks from the town and they'll go over the right to pave on your property and all of that stuff. So that will happen and those discussions will happen.
And that doesn't have to happen before we take our vote.
Happen in a week's time though.
Or we do authorization.
They've got a.
Yes, we would give the vote, we would give the vote contingent on all that.
It's really not much different.
Paperwork and rights bonding and all this other stuff that we need taken care of.
This is not, we're not going to the moon.
So.
A wire under the road is no big deal, I mean, they've done this before once or twice.
Right.
And, and in terms of the paving, because it's going across the road rather than down the length of the road, there's a lot less paving.
Right.
And for a while, if there's a little bit of a divot or a bump.
Right.
Uh, I think we can live this, live with that, we might be able to take, fix that when we do our paving.
Yeah, at, at the school.
At the school.
Right, you just have them kind of.
Later, so, I mean, we're not too, too worried about that.
Right, this whole project was.
So if it was published.
I totally understand that.
Yeah, 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 no, we definitely want that, so.
So if there's, you know, if we need to do a little.
Does it count when it's published electronically? Is it Thursday? Starts or Friday when it's?
Okay. Now, I, I thought this might happen, but the difficulty is there's no way to communicate with you guys as a board without getting on your schedule, right? And so, you know, when they suggested this, I thought, you know, I need to clear this with you guys and them, but, right?
Well, note to us, maybe we need to have a new pers, some way that people with timely, you know, really urgent things need to be able to, you know, well, you could have probably told Tim and he could probably.
Oh, we got it advertised, I mean. Yeah, right. We're here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
All right, so who, I mean, there's one a date for that?
Well, you could have advertised it twice and done both of these, I mean, the hearing could have been advertised in two different ways or, or maybe written in a different way so it wasn't for a poll.
Right, it could have been, right, a broader definition.
Some of these Warren articles that we write.
Yeah.
If it had been a broader hearing, we could have taken care of it tonight.
Yeah.
Well, they told us they were going overhead, they're not going underground.
I understand what I'm saying to everybody is, okay.
Yeah.
So, it, but if it gets, does it count electro, the, the electronic publication of the mosquito on Thursday or does it, is it Friday when it is in hard copy?
I'd say it's the, the date of publication would be Friday, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the following Friday would be the seven days, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'd have to see if.
Well, it's, you need seven days for the abutter notifications, right? And then you just need one in the mosquito, so it's.
So the abutter notifications would have to go out tomorrow if we wanted to do something at the end of next week.
Right, so probably the earliest you could do then would be next week, Wednesday.
Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
No, no, that's not, that's a week.
A while, yeah.
And, and in fairness to the board, I think we asked the last time, would this go underground?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, so the information changed, so that, I think that's why we're at the point where, you know, it's not, you know, it's, I don't, I don't think, nobody opposes this, it's just, you know, I mean, I think we're all under the impression that it was gonna go underground and, you know, no problem with moving forward.
And we think, I mean, when you look at the picture, look at all those trees, you know, it's, I had, you know, two power outages today in my house.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the thing, you know, we're trying to not have.
That's right.
But, 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 but the two, the two hour powers combined lasted nine seconds.
Oh, you have a power wall, sorry.
The, my, my inverter measures how much time it powers out, they were, the, the two power outages combined were nine seconds.
I know, but that was enough to screw up my outdoor lights, which, because I think they're on solid now because I think I turned it off.
Well, that's what I'm gonna clarify, yeah, thanks.
Twice, but anyway.
Okay.
So where, so what are we saying? We're saying we're gonna try to, um, have the Board of Selectmen have a hearing on this before the holidays? Take a vote before the holidays?
If it can happen.
If it can happen, okay.
Yeah, so.
And, and we also, well, I think we also, no, okay, taking a step back, are we also saying though, that does this, do we, have we just put the, the kiss of death on this thing because it now absolutely cannot be done before May or?
No, we, I think I would like an understanding from the board, is, so the, the Energy Task Force said the right thing to do is to continue with this project if we have to forego this. If the board agrees with that, right, foregoing, you know, attempting for grants for Green Communities grants, I guess I'd just like to hear you guys say that, right, because it's, you know, it's potentially two hundred and fifty thousand that we might not be able to get.
Next year.
So.
Well, how much is this?
We probably won't get that.
But, but, but what we're hearing is that we're probably not gonna be able to get it, go, go for it anyway.
Right, but I'm saying, so if we, since we're, it sounds, sounds like we're not even voting positively on this tonight, the two options that remain are drop the project and attempt to get Green Communities grants for next year, which will get somewhere between zero and two hundred and fifty thousand, um, or continue forward with this project, foregoing that because they won't be able to get done in time.
Well, how much was this project? Well, how much was this project? It wasn't a lot of money, right?
So, so the Green Communities Grant is $9,424.80. The Eversource portion has not been disclosed to us, they pay for it entirely without every payment.
Significantly more than that.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
My, my, it is over 100,000.
Yeah, but is that going to change in the foreseeable future? I mean, so if, if we don't do this now, we apply for a Green Communities Grant, we just do it in the spring?
No, that's it. So, if, so Green Communities Grants will not arrive in time for us to do this.
Oh, I guess, I guess, I guess, okay.
So if we were to attempt to redo this.
See, that's the other problem.
Then, then, so, so if we go for grants, then there will not be a charger at the school because we won't want to go through and rip up the grant you're parting on.
Yeah, no, you definitely won't.
And that's where the chargers belong, or at the school for the teachers.
That's, that's one of many places.
Yeah, I know, but it's one of the best places in town for, to encourage employees to drive electric vehicles.
And it's going in in such a way that we could have more in the future in that location.
Right, yeah, which I really like.
You know, I'm a bird in the hand guy, let's do this project.
Yes, I agree.
It'll be, it, since we probably aren't going to be able to apply for Green Communities Grant anyway, because regardless of which way we go, we're not going to have it done in time, let's do this.
I agree.
It coordinates well with the school park, parking lot paving, and it'll go underground, it'll be done right.
And let's do it and let's do it right.
Yep.
And we recognize that we will be giving up the possibility of a Green Communities Grant next year.
It is unfortunate, we're sorry, but we think.
No, that's okay because there, as you know, the Energy Task Force is understaffed.
Yes.
And so, having them not manage more projects next year than a Green Communities is also a point of that.
Yeah, it might be a good time to regroup and, you know, try to get.
It's one of those positions that we are not going to fund this year, was the grant writing, which would have.
Yeah.
And we need to rebuild the Energy Task Force.
You know, sometimes I still wonder, I still ask myself, it's not a false economy in our parts, but, which is something we'll be discussing with Finka.
Yeah.
Well, and, and part of it too, you know, with Nathan's proposal there with, you know, taking some of that money from some of the, the projects that have been implemented, maybe, I don't know exactly when that would happen, right, but, but maybe by next year there would be some funds to, to get some support to help write these grants, you know.
Yes.
It's just, yeah, pay more people.
Okay, so how will you guys decide when you're going to have a meeting or should we just push it off until the 14th?
We will decide when, when you, when you tell us what you're doing. We, we, I think what you've heard from this group is that we're still interested in going, moving forward for, to install the infrastructure. And so, if you need us to meet before, you know, before our next meeting in order to give you some, seems to me the pressure seems, is off if we, right?
Yeah, if we, if we just go ahead and say that, then maybe what we should do is just plan for a January 14th hearing. The, yeah, let's just plan for January 14th.
And it's going to cost the town 10K probably?
No, because as long as we spend the Green Communities Grant money before May 31st.
Right, you got to delay now, yeah.
And it certainly should be done by then.
So, all right, so I, yes, okay.
No, the, well, it's just, does it make sense to have it sooner though so Eversource can get going? I mean, are, are, because we're going to stall you, right?
We would like to get the process going as fast as we can, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so.
I mean, the sooner you hold a hearing and approve, see, I can't really spend the Green Communities Grant until we've got all the approvals from all the boards.
Right.
Okay.
So the school committee meets tomorrow, they've been very supportive, so I'm kind of expecting that they'll support it, you know, so, but, then that's the last board meeting would be you guys to approve this approval.
Okay, so, let me put it to you this way, if you feel you need a board meeting before the January 14th, please let Tim know and he will see what he can do for you to get us together to, to do that one item.
Okay, well, do you think we should try for next week, Wednesday? Because the earliest available opportunity.
Let me see.
Yeah, yeah, Wednesday, the 18th or Friday, the 20th, right? Because we're going to have to move to, to postpone or to extend the public hearing until such a date, right, in time. And then we just extend it again if, if you guys aren't ready, right? But, but the slot is still there.
It's a different hearing.
It's a new public hearing, right?
It's a new.
Because now, now it's a.
We will close this going.
Road opening hearing. Oh, it's a road opening hearing, yeah. Yeah, so then, but we can still do that.
I don't have, it's like, how many feet up the road?
Yeah, 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 right.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
It's a little bit more open ended where it's going.
But that's what, will you be able to provide that?
Sure.
By the?
By the 18th or the 20th?
If we were to meet next week?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, because you got, you guys have everything, it's just on a computer, right? You're, and bang, yeah.
Yeah, that's not it.
Yeah, when I wanted gas extended, the guy was, he was, oh, no, we could go this way, we could go that way, we could do this, we could do, you know, it was still $40,000. I was like, oh, no, stick to oil, thanks. It's a lot of, you buy a lot of oil for $40,000. So, what, the 18th or the 20th? I mean, what?
If we advertise for Friday, then seven days, 20th is really the earliest you could do it.
And is this morning or meet or?
So, do you hear that, that 20th is the earliest we could do it?
Oh, 20th is the earliest we can do it.
Oh, yeah, if it's the Friday, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so that's Friday, okay.
It could be in the morning if that's better.
I could do it eight in the morning.
It works for me.
I could do that too.
I, I, I don't care.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, December 20th.
All right, so we'll put it in AM, okay.
This is hearing. Clark Room.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, you could vote to close this hearing because you're not going to grant a, over the road to.
Should you vote no?
Nay!
No, we don't want a vote.
No, fine, just, yeah.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so.
Causing all kinds of trouble tonight, yeah.
Yeah, I know, we're not even Nathan.
I'm, I'm pulling a Nathan, that's what I'm doing, yeah.
So we have another public hearing for the underground storage of propane on, um.
River Road.
River Road, and.
Fire chief is here.
I will read the, um, legal notice, the Town of Carlisle Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, at 8:00 PM at the Town Hall, Clark Meeting Room, 66 Westford Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741, pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 148, Section 13, regarding the license application submitted by John Power for the installation of underground propane tanks at the property located at 383 River Road, Assessor Parcel, Parcel ID 1-7-1, described as follows, three 850 gallon ASME propane tanks with total aggregate quantity of 2,550 gallons of liquefied petroleum gas to be stored. Comments thereon may be submitted in writing to the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator's Office, 66 Westford Street, Carlisle, Mass. 01741, by noon on Friday, December 6th, 2019, or in person at the hearing. So I declare this hearing open, and Tim, did we get any written comments?
We did not.
Thank you. Is there somebody here to make a presentation?
Fire, fire chief's here to speak to it.
Okay.
They've reviewed the application.
It's interesting, this guy is a fellow Californian owner.
Sherman Oaks, C.A.
Sherman Oaks, hey, I, I lived right by there. I, my stomping grounds, okay, Ventura Boulevard, can't believe it. Okay, um, do we have any discussion, any information that we need?
I think the, the chief can provide some background, I don't think the applicant is here, but.
So, I wrote a note, I think it was attached to it, that, in speaking to them, so this is a private drive, very, very narrow, winds down in there, if something happened and we laid a line in there, we'd basically block the road with the line that we just brought in, meaning no more trucks, no more anything. You look over there, they ripped out the swimming pool, and I talked to them and they said, oh, yes, 40,000 gallon swimming pool is going in. So, my proposal to them, I don't, I didn't, I tried to word it in such a way that I don't want to hold this up, you know, if they want to get this in before they get a swimming pool in, that's one thing, but basically on renewal, we expect to either have a stand pipe going to that swimming pool so we can use that water if we need to, or a cistern. But so, to kind of, the way, the reason I worded it that way was so that there wouldn't be this chicken or egg problem of, oh, they need this for the winter and they don't have the swimming pool yet and that kind of thing, but that basically we expect by the time they're done and people are living in there that, that we have some kind of a water source down there.
Is there on the other side of the, of the road from the river or are they on the riverside? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so, there is not a direct access to the river for our trucks.
Okay, all right, just, just.
Yeah, right. There is a, there is a pond not too far away, but it's a very shallow pond that would be very seasonal.
Yeah.
And so.
Yucky and yucky, okay.
So, the only, so the contractor says that there are 1,000 gallon tanks on the application that says they're 850.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yes.
So, the, I believe what you're doing, well.
Three, 8500, 850.
Anything over 2,000 gallons requires a license, and so you're giving them a license for something over 2,000 gallons.
Yeah, but in addition.
But I don't know.
In ground, right.
So, I mean, either way.
So, my understanding is that a 1,000 gallon tank holds about 850 gallons.
Oh, okay.
But, but they should have written it as a 1,000 gallon tank if they planned to put a 1,000 gallon tank in.
Well, also, but one of the, one's a letter and the other one's a, is an application, and I think we need to be going by the application, not by the email.
Yeah, well, is it accurate though, I guess is the question?
Right.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's just, there's a discrepancy there.
In any case, it's over 2,000 gallons, so.
Yeah, so, but why, why, what's, what's the reason for the 2,000? Is it a safety thing, is it a?
Well, 2,000 gallons of propane is a lot of propane.
Yeah.
And, so the way the Mass General Law is, is that you need a license on a property for over 2,000 gallons. A lot of what that has to do with is, often a property is used by a bunch of different people.
Yeah.
And so what they don't want is, you know, this guy has 750 gallons, this guy has 800 gallons, this guy, and nobody gets a license because all of a sudden on this one property you have all of these, this thing. So they, they just set a, something and said, you need to come and get your jurisdiction to allow you to have more than 2,000 gallons, and it's, and it's by property, not by user. So like Massport needs to have a license because they have all these different people with, with, yeah.
I'm sorry if this is, I should know this, but, the propane is just to serve the house? That's a heck of a lot of.
Yeah, it's, two of them are for the house, one's for the generator.
It's generator.
Right, generator, but.
It is, it is, but it's also a heck of a house.
It is.
So that's a piece of it.
Okay.
But, but I think people in those kinds of places want the place to run for a period of time, generator to be able to run without interruption and all that, that kind of thing. But, again, that's not my, I'm more looking at the safety aspects rather than should they want that.
Right.
Often when you have that, it's because you have greenhouses or something like that. Typically if you have that, that size, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we did with greenhouse.
Greenhouses are, yeah, used, used quite a bit.
And so, are they, so the house is way back, the tanks are off, I mean, it's not going to.
Right, so the big thing you're concerned about is, unlike natural gas, propane goes downhill.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Settles down, and so, there is a house down the hill, it's done in such a way that there's something of a ravine where the gas probably wouldn't hit it, but it's my understanding they even own that house that's down there as well, so.
That's where they'll put the in-laws, yeah.
Yeah. But, but in general, there's, there's a little bit of a ravine between the two houses even though it goes downhill from, from their house.
Yeah.
But that would be our big concern is what happens when you have it let loose.
Yeah.
As well as, I've talked to the, to them about a shut off to the house so that if you need to shut off the house because you're not going to use up that much propane, it's going to, if it, if there's a problem in the house, it's going to go for a long time before you.
Yeah.
So they're going to have a shut off on the side of the house.
I guess in general, are you okay with that?
In that situation, that location, yes, there's enough space that.
So if we approve the license, do you suggest that we include, um.
Two conditions.
Your recommendation about the stand pipe and the.
Right, the way I worded it was that that would be required on renewal in two years, so these have to be renewed every two years to, to give them a warning that we do expect it to happen, but that again, I, I didn't want to word it in such a way that they, until they had the swimming pool in, they couldn't have heat.
I see.
What if they decided not to put a swimming pool in?
Well, then they would put a cistern in.
Yeah.
Then they'd have to put a cistern, okay.
And again, I, I don't know that it needs to be worded that way, I think it was more just serving them notice that they, they agreed to this and we expect it. But every, for any of these licenses you do, they're for two years and you can take it away the next two years.
And this would be for their own protection, actually.
Absolutely, and that's the reason why they, that's the reason why they agreed to it so readily. I mean, they know it's a narrow drive that, and it's a place worth saving.
So, so do we, are, are we fine with the wording of this application? Are you saying, Luke, it needs, may need to be changed to indicate it's.
No, the application is fine.
The application is fine.
Is the, the.
Well, unless they eat 50, unless it should be worded as 1,000 gallon tanks.
Well, if that's what we'll approve, we'll prove it's on the application.
But that's the, the application.
Well, yeah, but do we.
Has three 850 gallons.
Right, yeah. That's the official.
That's the official one, that's what they can put in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that.
But you're saying it actually is 1,000?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't?
I don't know, what I do know is that the effective capacity of a 1,000 gallon tank is less than that and it's somewhere around that.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so, I, I'm just guessing that that might have been where the.
Right, discrepancy is, okay, they're talking about how much actual propane.
But in reality, what we're approving is greater than 2,000 gallons.
Yeah.
Yes, right.
Yeah, so with, so I guess the only thing is, on the motion that we have in front of us here, do we want to add with the condition?
There are two conditions.
That the owner will prepare a written, yeah, I think we want to add that language to the motion, and so it just, it would be the motion plus this.
Okay.
For whomever is making the motion.
I can do that.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, all those in favor? A second? Sorry, we got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now I move to approve the license application submitted by John Power for the installation of underground propane tanks at the property located at 383 River Road, Assessor Parcel ID 1-7-1, described as follows, three 850 gallon ASME propane tanks with a total aggregate quantity of 2,550 gallons of liquefied petroleum gas to be stored. Further, that the owner prepares an emergency written plan to be approved by the fire department.
And, okay, do we want to say that?
Well, that says May.
Yeah, the question is, do we also want to add that in two years when they come before us, if the pool has not been, well, and, and it's also conditioned. No, I think it really is conditioned, well, on a pool or cistern being built before renewal, before they come back for us, we don't want to leave them there for two years without one or the other.
Right, again, I, I tried, I tried to work on a wording.
Understand.
And, and, and it tied yourself to knots and I, so I just decided this was the easiest thing is to warn them that this is.
Or maybe just say, and that before.
Is that tied to the use of the propane?
Yes.
Or is that just standard, something you want to do for fire protection in general for that?
It would be nice for fire protection, but this is a place where they're adding a hazard and therefore.
Yeah, so I think it's conditioned on either a pool or a cistern being installed before the end of the year, or not this year, but before, before the end of next year, or before.
Yeah, well, could we revoke it? And so I.
Just not renew it.
Yeah, we, we just wouldn't renew it, right? I mean, you put a condition on, but if we can't revoke it, then we just.
Okay, but then, with that condition.
Anything you grant, you can revoke.
Yeah, is there a fee for this?
My general, I, I believe there was.
Oh, good.
That's generally the case in Mass General Law, at least that is for, for any permits we give, we can revoke them.
Okay.
If you don't.
Well, so that's the thing, do we want to set a timetable on it or do we want to just say?
What would you like as a timetable?
We don't know what the construction timetable is.
Right.
No, exactly.
No, that's why I was giving them a year.
Yeah.
Well, what if we said before renewal?
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking, right? And then we just wouldn't renew it, just give them a heads up that.
Right, the, um.
You know, you got, you got your two years.
There would, there will be either a stand pipe included in the swimming pool or a There would, there will be either a standpipe included in the swimming pool or a cistern in order to renew the license.
They, I don't know that anybody's in a hurry to live there. So, there's a piece of it where if somebody was going to be in there immediately, my timetable would be different, but I see no indication of that.
All right.
It's been under construction for a long time and from what I see, it's going to be under construction for longer.
Okay. I have to meet those people. Okay.
They didn't have a tank to heat the swimming pool.
Yes, all right, so, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. So, we have first, you did put in the first thing, I want to put in the second condition or not?
I, I think that's something you handle at renewal, but-
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So is there a second?
A second? Because I didn't make the motion, right?
I did.
Yeah, so I was-
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And you've already written to them, they know that they won't get renewed.
I'm not sure I gave them those words, I will talk to them.
Yeah, what I could say is, at this point now, you could say, the board of selectmen, you know, approved your, your application, however, they agreed that they will not renew it in two years if there is not one of the two things included.
Very good.
Okay? Words in one syllable. Well, a couple of minutes late for our budget personnel overview, review of fee structures and the review of potential warrant articles, but here we are. Who wants to join us?
Come on down.
Typically, yeah.
Kim should definitely-
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're outnumbered here.
That was deliberate.
Can we get higher chairs?
Deliberate.
You already have higher chairs.
Oh, yeah, look at you.
Cut your legs a little shorter.
It's a chair that sinks.
When we need it, yeah.
The ejector chair.
The ejector chair. Well, you want to start?
Sure, so, so we met last night and we have been meeting for a number of meetings since last time we got together, which was in September. And as you know, you know, this is the FY twenty-one budget process that we're kind of going through. And we usually kind of kick it off in September. We actually have these sessions with the different committees and departments to essentially gather information around what their needs are in order to kind of fulfill what they, they think are kind of the priorities. And coming into the end of the year, we typically issue a guidance of which the first month and a half of next year we'll consider and talk with departments again, if there's something that materially changed. If there's nothing to change, it's not a, you know, an opportunity just to come and say the same thing again. But if there's something materially changed, we'll discuss that. We'll finalize that obviously before town meeting, put it into the warrant with regards to the letter and such. And I'm highlighting the process because I think there's a number of roles and responsibilities that are in that process. I think from the board of selectmen, what we looked to you guys for as we go through this process of developing the guidance is really the priorities and the objectives for the town. And it's in that that we can actually go and develop these, the guidance and the finalized budget recommendation. And that's our responsibility to provide that guidance and recommendation to the town. And it is the FinCom's recommendation. Certainly we work very, very closely and I don't think, I've been on the board for, what, two, three years now? It's not, you know, there's no vast kind of differences between board of selectmen, but ultimately it's the decision of the FinCom to present to the town for approval in that. But in order to do that effectively, I think there's that aspect of really understanding the, your priorities and objectives, not only this year, but really, you know, coming forward, kind of seeing the dynamics of what's happening in the town and the needs and such. And in the departments, really the departments, their role is to provide information. In a certain sense, if it is well understood what the priorities of the town are, what they should align their budgets to is to support that, those priorities in that. And I think that's one of the things that, as we've discussed as a committee, that each year seems that there is some clarity in that, but there could be always better clarity in terms of what those priorities are. It would help us to be able to have our discussions around kind of landing, landing that. I think the personnel process, which I think there's some discussions about that you've had, you know, kind of follows that. You know, we put into place, it's that the board of selectmen actually review these and it doesn't go any further than the board of selectmen until you said, hey, this fits within the priorities of the town of what we think is important. And then it goes personnel board and ultimately to us. So even in that personnel process, it's very similar in that aspect of really needing to know, hey, what's, what's important? And I think as I read as an example, the, the letter that David wrote, and I think he wrote it to a number of different people, I think what he was highlighting is like, hey, is this a priority in the town? You have an aging community, they have needs, and I think that's certainly something that you as, you know, board of selectmen need to kind of sort through and discuss. And we want to hear what those priorities are, you know, from that, not only in that, I was using it as an example, but just in general, that type of thing. So, the last comment I'd make is before we kind of open up, can open up some dialogue is, you know, at least my, one of my objectives to share is really to change our annual budgetary conversations from looking at just this present year to really looking a little bit further. And I think that goes back to this aspect of, you know, we can go every year and look at, hey, zero percent budgeting or whatever it ends up being, but that's very short term, right? You're looking at trying to, you know, deal with an acute issue. What are the kind of longer term issues that we see? Aging population, you know, all these different things that are happening to our town. And what does that mean for us as a town, you know, from the board of selectmen in terms of the priorities, objectives that we're trying to accomplish? And I think that's our hope for, you know, this meeting. At least one of our takeaways, or maybe a number of takeaways would be, what are those kind of key things that you've been discussing that in terms of our process? We'll meet one more time next week. We actually have all of the requests and kind of, we just kind of laundry list them down. But then knowing those priorities, we'll have those, that, you know, next discussion and then we'll kind of finalize kind of the recommendation. So we have no recommendation going in because we feel that there's, there are some things that we'd like to hear a bit more about in terms of your priorities before we finalize that. I'll kind of pause there and in the rest of the committees, anything else that you'd like to add? We met last night, kind of in, kind of thinking through, taking a look at what was, what was put together in terms of in aggregate and beginning to talk about, what are the things that we kind of need to be able to move, move the ball forward?
I think it's important to remember, so we're, a lot of what we're doing is focused on the operating budget. I can talk to long-term caps, which is part of that, separate warrant. In addition to that, when we talk about tax burden on our residents, obviously the warrants are a big factor. And so getting an understanding tonight of the scope of the warrants, getting your visibility into what's still up in the air, what's still open would be helpful. We've heard things and it would be good to get your perspective on that, that's a big financial component. In addition, just the other pieces that may, make this complicated are, you know, revenue forecasts, growth outside of the tax base, grants, there's all these other factors that come into the tax burden. And I think, I want to underscore that we take a conservative approach in forecasting what those are. So local receipts, so typically, I think what we find, and I think this year was no exception, when we present a budget at town meeting, usually the actual tax rate increase is not quite as, as large as what we thought it might be at town meeting, because we tend to be conservative on forecasting those other financial components that although we rely on residential property tax, those other components can move things. So be aware of that as we talk through these, there's a lot of unknowns as we try to make a budget, knowing that we'll vote on it in, is it April or is it May this year?
April.
April, it's April. And we don't even finalize the tax rate till the following November, so.
Well, we just finalized this year's.
Yeah.
In fact, what did it end up being?
Eighteen thirty-six, seven cents over last year, over last year. So it was eighteen twenty-nine for twenty nineteen.
And what had we, sorry, what had we forecast?
We didn't forecast, we don't, we don't typically in the town presentation forecast a tax rate because the tax rate is also dependent on the assessment of all the-
Right.
So it's-
Right, we hadn't forecasted.
It's complicated, so generally what we do is we focus on the operating budget increase and the increase, if you take in operating budget, the warrants.
Long-term.
And then we make a general statement about what we think will happen with local receipts, government, grants, circuit breaker, and those are the things that ultimately we have to wait and see.
Local receipts did go up this year and we did bump that number.
But when we talk about what the increase in budget is from the other year, we said, you know, two point whatever percent it was, people hear that as, that's what my taxes are going up.
That's right.
So I guess what my question is, what did we forecast as our budget increased as opposed to what is the actual percent increase of the, of the-
You'd have to look at the, I hate to say it, you have to look at the individual tax bills because someone's assessment may have gone up.
Well, but seventeen cents more than something than-
Seven cents.
Seven cents, more than less is what percent of the original rate is what I'm asking.
Seven cents on eighteen dollars would be-
Thirty-six, yeah. I'll have to calculate it later, but.
Very small. But that doesn't necessarily map to-
It's very small, you're right.
Evaluations, state of the summer.
I only bring it up to say, we're talking about a component of the budget tonight.
Because the evaluations have gone up.
Yeah.
You're looking at your whole tax liability of your twenty-eight million or whatever it is.
Rates only one's part of it.
And this year, we did increase the local receipts, which takes a little bit of a burden off, but you don't have a lot of like motor vehicle went up and fees and something like that.
Right, but it's, but it's the other thing that makes things difficult to talk to people about and have everybody really understand what is going, what is happening. But I do know that, you know, the perception is, my taxes have gone up thirty percent in the last ten years.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably not too far off the mark.
So could we say, is there a way to calculate then that, that taxes paid by individual homeowners, the total there and what percentage increase that was over the previous year?
Yeah, well, what we've done in the past is we've taken the average, average home value, the average tax bill. And I think we presented that at a town meeting, the average tax bill.
Yeah, and so what were we saying, what did we say last time about what the average increase was going to be? And then where did it actually come down?
We can, we can follow up on that.
Yeah.
The only point I wanted to make is, we generally-
I understand your point, but I'm also saying that we have to be so careful when we talk about these things because of the perception in town and where people-
Absolutely.
How people feel about it.
And this is one thing that I want to highlight in this, because we get into this conversation and I think, and very often we try to get into a judgment of, what's a reasonable tax increase, right? I think that's what we're trying to get at.
Depends on who you ask.
It depends on who you ask and, and I think the thing I challenged in there too is if their requirements or needs, or at least what they see in terms of the town are being met, they're willing to pay for that.
That's right.
And so that's why I want to get into this aspect and kind of push a conversation away from looking at tax rates into where's the direction for the town going? Because what, what we develop or what you're developing in terms of a viewpoint is not only your own viewpoint, because obviously you're hearing the viewpoints of many, many constituents. And in that, you're kind of formulating, hey, this, these are the priorities, you know, our town loves, you know, buying up properties, right? I mean, they like their open space. I may phrase it that way as opposed to open, they love their open space. That is a priority for the town, right? They're willing to pay for things like that.
But we also, we were just notified tonight that the senior population has gone up sixty percent in the past ten years.
That's right.
And the school population has gone down by approximately the same amount at, over the same period. So that's, I think, is going to happen.
No, the town, the school population hasn't gone down sixty percent.
Well, it went down from, went from eight hundred to six hundred.
Well, that's, that eight hundred was a, was a bubble. I mean, it stabilized at around six hundred.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, the general point is-
The general population has gone down, right?
It's not the same though.
So aging population is going to become more of a priority.
That's right, exactly.
So if you're asking about priorities, I'm showing, telling you, that's going to be more of a priority.
That's right, that's right. And I guess what I'm saying with regards to that is, you know, they, in one instance, one priority there's, oh, I have a fixed income. But if essentially they see that essentially the taxes that they pay into it are actually benefiting them in, in some way, in, in a way that's valuable to them, it's not so much of a complaint coming out, right? I think very often what you may hear is like, well, I don't have kids in the school anymore, right? And so then all my taxes are kind of going to, I don't see any benefit in it. That's where the thing comes in.
That's where the complex.
And I think that's the proverbial challenge that you have in, in terms of balancing that because in, in some instances, some of the younger families move into town because of the, the school system. Well, if you bend it to, you know, purely to essentially our aging population, then essentially you, it's kind of a, you know, the story's made, right? You know, the younger families aren't going to move in and it's just going to keep getting older, right, in that way. So, you know, I don't envy your, your position, but I think that's the piece, it's, it's a good dialogue to get an understanding of, you know, based upon where you guys are hearing, what you guys have discussed, you know, what are some of the key aspects of priorities and objectives? You know, I threw a few of these as an example, in terms of investment. Another example in terms of, you know, increasing, let's say, increasing my taxes. Would you increase our taxes this year so that you can decrease them next year? That's about efficiency, right? You know, so these are all kind of key things and, you know, you think about from solving that the challenge we have with higher taxes, maybe this year's not, you know, whatever, zero percent or a low percent, maybe you want three or four percent and we focus on efficiency and the next years you manage it that way, right?
It's a little bit of what I was talking about when Jonathan DeCock was here. We had a, we're looking like we're going to be losing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant funding because we're not able to keep up with our grants. If we had more staff that we're helping to do that, which would not cost any two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, so yes, there are times where you do want to spend money to save money.
That's right.
Facilities, right? We have to, we have to invest now in facilities to avoid catastrophic repairs in ten years, which we've been dealing with.
So, which is keeping me up at night because I see all the things looming.
Yep.
And I'm trying to figure out, without raising the taxes astronomically, where else can we find some money to help us out over this hump? Because we have, we have been suffocating the facilities for years and years and years and so at this point, we can't, you know, it's like Balaam's ass, you know? We can't, it's going to just, right?
That's right, I know the reference.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure how many others know the, the reference, but.
We can't do that anymore.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. And at the same token, it's like, you know, this aspect of other things like I have here, it's an objective and a priority, increase employee retention. Because you can think of it this way, while we keep it low and then you manage, you know, your expenses that way, but if people keep turning over, there's a big expense to turn, turnover of people, right? And, you know, so obviously there's aspects of that and I think there was one meeting that we had and we said, oh, what it would mean to have like a flat budget? I said, well, there's no cola, right? In order to get the flat, but, oh, no, we can't have it. Why? Because you want to make sure that you have, you're managing your employees, right?
This is why it's important also to have those discussions.
That's right.
Because it reminds you and everybody why we are doing the things that we're doing. You, you don't want to just be doing it year after year after year because you did it last year. I think it's important at a certain point to step back and say, well, we're doing this for employee retention and not only that, but we're going to have to probably give them more benefits because we're lagging way behind everybody else in the benefits. And so when they, when the employee who was happy enough with the benefits and is staying but ends up leaving, we won't be able to attract anybody good because they'll say, what? This is it? Forget it, I'm going to the next town over.
Right, right, yeah. And in a certain sense, I mean, again, again, this is all the, I just threw these, these are examples. I don't know whether you've discussed any of these or not, but in terms of objectives and priorities, you know, what are some of the things that you're kind of, have you discussed and thought through and for, you know, this year and kind of going forward is like, hey, these are the areas that we really think that we need to kind of move towards from a town perspective in terms of priority?
Well, like maybe in the context of, I don't know if you want to start with warrants, are there particular warrants that you're more favorable towards than others? Specifically the ones that have price tags associated with them?
Yeah.
Like I know facilities has been a, an area of focus the last two years between the board of selectmen and finance committee.
Yeah.
I think the biggest unknown for us, we know the requests, we're familiar with the department budgets. The warrants are the ones that can really move-
Needle.
An annual budget, you know, you could have one warrant that, half a million dollar warrant that, you know, could mean a percentage and a half depending on how it's funded. So, and when we, when we make our budget letter, we assume passage of all the warrants.
Mm-hmm.
And we will do that, but from a planning standpoint, like where do you fall on those things? I know we've, we've gotten reports of the personnel decisions or discussions that have been had to date. Those are important inputs.
And the personnel decisions, you know, to me, there's implied priority there. I don't know if I should connect, connect the two, but that's something that would be helpful for us to understand as well. Because in terms of this aspect of, you know, the hiring or adding, adding staffs, like what we're going to hold on that, I can imply a priority of, you know, what, what I think it is, but it'd be good to hear a little bit about some of your conversation, thought process, you know, around that as well. But, you know, let's kind of, you know, I think-
I think a valid thing, I mean, because it's hard, it's very broad, there's a lot of things going on. I think one of the, you have, you can start with a, you could go below it, but you could say maintain service budget. We're not going to do anything more than we're doing without any more resources than what we're doing. We're going to maintain service level.
I think that's what we're going for.
And if you maintain service level, history shows contractual increases, cost of external things, I mean, there's more detail behind that, but you're already about a percentage and a half increase in the budget if you just maintain what you have. If you layer on some of these warrants, things that are important, you start to build on them. And so, I think that's the mindset, it's, it's good to have of just maintaining. Now, you shouldn't, maybe you don't maintain in all areas. Maybe there's areas where you're reducing, yeah. But you, you kind of start at a baseline of percentage and a half and then anything extra you want to do on top of that adds to that. So that's where I think the prioritization becomes critical of saying, because there's a ton of great things we can do in town, from community service, community centers to-
Police stations.
Police stations to, you know, and there's some nice to haves, there's some must haves. I think in past years, we've, we've prioritized health and safety in terms of the building projects.
Exactly.
And I think that's where we need to look at this year and say-
And I just want to say also, but when you say level services, I think what that has, I think that message has kind of gone out this year and I think it has stimulated, because year after year, you guys have said, well, are there any efficiencies you could institute?
Yeah.
This year, we're starting to see people come forward with some ideas.
That's great.
And I think it's because of the pressure on the budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I, I would like to see that play out as well.
Yes.
People, you know, we talked about reviewing fees and things like that and suddenly that's now come to the forefront.
That's right.
Because if you didn't have to, well, you know, if you're going to get everything you want and besides, without doing that, why not? And at this point, I think there's that worry that they're not going to get everything you want, you know, so they're, they really are looking hard. And I think there will be, you know, some movement there for really getting some efficiencies.
Yeah, and you know, if efficiencies- Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, you know, if efficiencies is, is an objective, there are ways that you can think through and how you incent that.
Well. Level budgets incent that.
Level budgets is one aspect, or you can, you can, you know.
For a year.
Look at from the standpoint of, uh, you know, crowdsourcing, have a contest, right? You know, there's things that, that you can do. And this is what I mean about priority, because the priority doesn't only reflect only with the lever of the budget, right? There are other things that, you know, you can think about in terms of trying to, to get to that, that place. Because ultimately, that is a, a key aspect of managing expenses is to do things better. And our, our ex-board committee member, Tom, right, he was always the thing, oh, efficiency, efficiency. In fact, he actually met with, you know, some groups to try to think about ideas, but he's only one person, right? You know, you get more ideas out there, you know, have a contest of the best one. And, and if you get the best one, you get the funding to, to kind of support it, you know, something like that, you know? Outside of just saying, hey, you know, we're going to kind of force you to because we're going to flat, flatline the budget that way, which is, which is a lever that you can pull.
I think another thing is, is sending the message. I mean, to, to some degree, we talk about what people want in terms of services and that sort of thing. One of the things we have, everybody wants to live in a rural community as if we were in Dixville, Notch, New Hampshire, okay? But they want services like Brookline, Massachusetts. And we have to balance those two things. And we have people who we're now hearing increased things, of people who can't stay in their homes anymore because they can't pay the taxes.
That is an increasing rate of that.
Is a real thing. And fixed means fixed. It's not going up with the rate taxes are going up. Taxes are going up at three and a half percent per year for about ten years now. And that's a significant amount if your, if your income isn't going up by that, that amount. So those have to be balanced. And I think people are finally, or maybe not finally, but are, are increasingly aware of those opposing priorities, of trying to limit the rate of tax increase and the realization that incomes aren't increasing at that same rate for, for a lot of people. And we.
So if I were to do a survey of, of the town, have we done a survey of the town, how do you feel about the tax increases over the last five years?
Everyone I've talked to are against them.
Everyone you, everyone you've talked, everyone you've talked to.
Question.
Well, yeah.
Whether they vote up something, they vote.
That's right.
Right.
No, absolutely.
I, I, the only, and I hear that, the, the thing that always, I'm always, I always find fascinating is you get to town meeting. And, I mean, a couple of years ago, this committee brought the CPA thing saying, hey, this is two percent surcharge that isn't really matched that much anymore and it, it's tied up. This is an opportunity to, and the town said, no, we want to keep this because.
Understand.
Or this project, typically it seems like this town, despite the, the tax pressures, supports, um, well-thought-out projects and budgets.
Yeah.
I mean, part of the problem is that there are a lot of people that do support that, but then there are a lot of people on fixed income.
That's right. That's right.
That may not be a town meeting or may not be.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Making their, their point heard very clearly, but are clearly under pressure.
But we all, and so we asked, have we seen an increase in, you know, in terms of people who are unable to pay their taxes or can't pay their taxes or taking advantage of some of the.
Oh, senior, yeah. That's, the, actually the understanding I'm getting is there's going to be a lot more coming up from the overlay for the senior tax workup program. I think that's being utilized, there's more jobs on that. It's not a huge amount, but I think there are more seniors.
In Carlisle?
That are taking advantage of it.
I'm looking at David because he's, because my understanding is that, um, once you, once you had to declare it, you know, as income, that, that the numbers fell off quite a bit.
Yeah, what happened was we, we had been, seven years ago, we had, the town had allocated seventeen thousand five hundred for the senior tax workup program and you could earn up to seven hundred dollars off of your tax bill by working for a town.
Seven hundred?
A year in, I think maybe two thousand thirteen or fourteen, at town meeting, we increased that amount to seven hundred to a thousand, uh, which was the current limit, a state limit at the time. The, the state limit has gone up to fifteen hundred. But you can't pay an imputed amount that's more than the state minimum wage. So the number of hours that somebody has to work to get up to that total is, is going to be prohibited. So I, I wouldn't necessarily, for example, advocate going up to the fifteen hundred because I think some people have trouble working enough hours just to get to a thousand dollars off of their bill. But I think that the, the point about before, the, at the state level, the amount, the, that they're earning of working for the town is tax-free, but unfortunately, the IRS wants Medicare tax withheld. So we have to, as Kim probably knows that from, from her job and her prior job and, uh, it's forcing the towns to hire the people temporarily as employees and withhold that minimum amount of tax and that minimum, even participation in the state retirement plan, which is, talk about inefficient.
Right.
It's going in and they're already retired, then they can take it out. I think, um, what, what, so we.
You cannot.
So what we have is, is at a thousand dollars and we're, we're currently budgeting twenty-five thousand dollars off of the overlay, then it's twenty-five pure slots of a thousand dollars. From a practical point of view, some people can't work all that, so we have some people working half slots or quarter slots. And I think what I recall from Angela mentioning, in the past year, we might have used twenty-three thousand out of the twenty-five thousand. So we're not quite, we, we have never hit that maximum amount.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd like to offer just a couple of comments. You know, we discussed the personnel positions that were being proposed after they had come back from the Personnel Board. And I think we all found that some of the, they were all well-thought-out and, um, and worthwhile. But I think our general feeling was, um, that this is a year that we, we need to think about the, um, financial impact and felt that we, I think, we might have supported one over another, but felt that it wouldn't, wouldn't be appropriate in this budget year to increa- increase a position or add a position, um, anywhere in the, in the town staffing. And, um, I think that's, I, I think that was the sense of the whole board. It was a unanimous decision. In terms of priorities, uh, it, it's an interesting place we're in right now because we have so many different efforts going on at the same time to think about the future of the town. So I'm specifically thinking of the master plan process, right, which is kind of over all this. But you have the Planning Board doing some really good thinking about, you know, how their staffing works. And you have, um, the school going through a visioning process. And you have other boards going through kind of priorities. The Gleason Library has got a five-year strategic plan. So, um, I think we need to play a role with the master plan with all of these different groups. Because I think that's really where we get that list of priorities, that.
That's right.
That the whole town hopefully feels invested in. And it's going to involve some choices.
So does that, just rephrase it, does that suggest that, when I hear that, it suggests to me, well, we don't want to go investing a lot of money into different projects that might not be related because we have yet to define a cohesive plan to be able to prioritize. So, to me, that would suggest we prioritize and we support projects that have to do with, if it's true, if we're talking about investing in facilities, it is making sure the buildings are safe.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
They don't fall down, they don't explode.
It's even more complicated than that because there are some.
Yeah.
On, on our list of, of items for the FY twenty-one warrant, there are a couple of big-ticket items, like replacing the rooftop unit on this building. The master plan's not going to help with that, but, but the issue is, the unit is at the end of its lifetime. It's, it's working now. It requires a lot of handholding from Steve Bastick and Bill Rissow to keep it working. Can we stretch it out for another year and put off spending that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars until the next fiscal year? Maybe.
That's, that's where judgment comes in. Are you risking additional expense?
Yeah, and that kind of expense, though, is, is not going to ever be an abandoned expense because we're probably not going to tear this building down. Let's say we moved, but it, the building would then be reused for something else. So it is worth doing that, you know?
Well, look at the, look at the emergency system, right? We're, we're investing a lot of money, we supported it.
Yeah.
You supported it. And this thing that's not part of the master plan, but we.
Right.
There was a lot of discussion about, is this, what's the, what's the lifetime of this thing? We're, we're investing in this now because it's health and safety. And we're confident due diligence was done to suggest that in ten years, it's not going to be obsolete.
Right.
And it's not going to be replaced. So that's a project we can get behind.
Right.
Versus something else.
Right.
Again, looking at the warrants, I don't know.
So, can we talk about, do you think, want to bring, I think this is a good time to talk about the police station. Yeah.
Okay.
That's a tricky one.
It's, okay, so.
Here, here's where we are with the police station. The, the initial pass at, at getting bids was, was way over what the budget amount was.
Disastrous.
So we spent some time with the architect and with the police chief, looking at the project and trying to reduce things as much as possible, consistent with the police department getting what they need to operate well.
For ten years.
Mm-hmm.
So we will have a new set of bid documents that will come out in January and those will get rebid. It, it's likely that the amount of money, well, it's hard to predict what, what bids are going to be because, and all the projects that had been bid lately have been above what the estimates were initially.
Significantly above.
But we, we need to get an idea of what the project will cost. And once we have that, we can decide what to do. And the choices are abandoning the project, which will not make the police department happy. Trying to scale it back to fit within the amount of money that we have allocated, which may be hard. Or coming up with some extra money. So one of the things that we've looked at, there are, in, in the cost of that project, there's a significant amount of money that addresses problems in that building that have existed maybe forever, that were uncovered in the process of looking at the building. Like, for instance, the, um, there's a, a plenum air system in the ceiling that, um, returns air. And also in the ceiling are exposed wires. That violates the building code. It should never have been done that way and it needs to be fixed. And that's a, a big-ticket item. So one of the things that we've tried to do is to move some of those, um, some of those maintenance costs from the building project into the FY twenty-one warrant article. Another example is the, the heating system in the top floor doesn't work, hasn't worked for a while. Right now, they can't use that upper floor. They have it closed off because there's no heat. So that's a problem. That's whether we, whether we renovate the police station or not, both of those problems need to be addressed. So because of that, we've moved that into the FY twenty-one warrant article.
With the eye to that, that, we may end up having to abandon the project. But regardless of whether we abandon the project or not, those things are not negotiable. They have to be taken care of.
And then there's the context of, I'm sure the master planning process, how does that?
Which is why we would be more apt to abandon the project because we don't want to spend a lot of money in that building for, for it, then, for us to then abandon those costs. Because they really don't do what the police really need. And, you know, we thought we could do what the police really needed for the original amount and that it would be good for ten years. Now that we're finding that we can't and it's not good for ten years, it doesn't, doesn't seem.
Changes it.
It changes the whole picture, but there's still a sizable portion of that money that still has to be spent. Regardless, for, again, health, safety and welfare, because.
Yep.
And, and it's ridiculous to, to abandon a third floor of the building for half of the year because they cannot use it. I mean.
No, and it, it's, we, we have a facilities manager now who has been doing wonderful things. And he has been able to nurse the chiller at the, at the library along to get it through this past, this past summer. Whether we can do that again for another summer, maybe. There's some chance, the, uh, the, 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 the heating unit at the police station is up in the ceiling. And part of the problem is getting to it is almost impossible. Steve has done some diagnosing work on it and discovered that there's power to it. And, um, it looks as if it ought to work. So maybe it's something as simple as a controller that could be fixed. Like, we, we fixed, he fixed the unit at the library by finding on eBay a controller card for, I think, forty dollars.
Efficiencies.
Yeah.
Which is why we wanted to expand his hours so we could do more things like that, you know, I mean.
Part of the problem.
But we're not because we're trying to help.
Nursing, nursing these units along has some cost and has, has risk. Because maybe next year, we won't be able to find a controller card on eBay.
Right.
And can't make that unit work.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We had talked, I mean, one of the things we're going to discuss, you want to bring up the centralized maintenance budget?
So that.
Oh, okay.
You know, as part of the operating budget, um, last year, we talked about it and we didn't have a facility manager. The question this year.
Yep.
For the Board of Selectmen is, we certainly can see potential financial benefits from doing that.
Yes.
Do we, is that something the Board supports? And do we have the resources to support that? We don't want to create bureaucracy.
Right.
But we want to provide a centralized maintenance function so that we can leverage the buildings of town. Instead of having a series of silos that.
Right.
I know there's different issues at different buildings, but the library director does not want to be maintaining.
When you ask the question, do we have the resources, what kind of resources are you talking about?
Facility manager.
Yeah, we have a facility manager.
This is more the day-to-day.
Yeah, but he's a part-time facility manager.
That's capacity for him to be able to take on more, right?
Right.
Which again, goes back to the whole aspect of the priorities and objectives, right? You know, I think you can say, well, we're not going to increase hours or whatever, um, or head, or people.
Yeah.
But then is that really the smartest thing to do when you have this burgeoning issue with potentially, you know, having him to be able to stretch some of these, um, aging things out, allow us to kind of spread things out further.
Save the town considerable amounts of money.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, he's, he's found things or been able to spend just enough time on things to think about your office. You know, one little valve changed her office by ten degrees.
Is that right? Wow.
Yes.
Yeah, there, I've been there, it was really cold. There's no one to sort of.
Do that troubleshooting.
Troubleshoot, that's a party, troubleshooting.
Wasn't there the issue of a, a clogged toilet somewhere that was something like five hundred dollars or something like that? Someone in a building has to call a number of some plumber.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we don't have a, there's a, there's financial efficiencies if we, and I don't know if that means more hours, but there's financial efficiencies if we can cross-leverage expertise and resource.
It does mean a little bit more hours because he is, he's pretty well maxed out at this point. And one of the, and, and there's a lot of procurement. So we were, we're thinking about some ways of taking that off of his lap so they would have more hours to just do the hands-on things. And we're looking at ways with, that maybe Jen might take a class or two and she might take on procurement.
Yeah. And in a certain sense, if you think of it, think of it this way too, and I, I don't know, I don't think there are particular departments or, or groups that have this situation, but I think longer term, you look at it from this standpoint, right? I, I hear from the librarian that she spends a good amount of time trying to handle these things. Well, if you increase the hours of the facility manager, you're actually preventing having to hire additional people, you know, in, in the library. Or actually, you're increasing the level of service in the library.
Right.
Of doing that. And you're making it more efficient because I'm sure she's not, you know, maybe she is, maybe she has all the experience of knowing the best, you know, pricing for everything, right? Or the best way of doing it, now you're getting more efficiencies in that.
I, I agree, but how do we rule that out?
Priorities.
Especially.
Priorities.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And this is something we need to communicate, if it's a priority, we communicate to the town. This is how, we, we're not managing it by saying, we're just going to do zero. This is how, we're not managing it by saying, we're just going to do 0%, whatever, all these different things.
Yeah.
The way that we're managing things long-term is we're going to make smart decisions on efficiencies. Here's an example, you know, with maintenance. You know, this is what we're going to centralize the budget, we're going to increase the hours from, this is what it means. So there is an aspect of communication so people understand when they look at, oh, you know, they're adding more hours and more head tiers. Like, that's the first inclination. But when they understand its implication in terms of why.
I think maintenance is unique though in that the idea is that it's actually a return on investment. Unlike a lot of.
That's right.
It's unique in that you're not doing it so that you provide better service to the residents.
That's right.
Because, you know, you're doing it because we feel like we're spending a lot of money inefficiently. And if we had someone that could manage that smartly, that by spending X dollars, we'd save 2X or 3X or 4X. It's a high leverage point financially.
It's what I, it's the problem where I always.
Not every request is like that.
Expenses show up on a budget, but savings don't.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
But in this case, we have a, we've been documenting a list of savings.
We're trying hard to do that.
We've been documenting a list of savings just because of that.
That's why I changed the bucket, right? The bucket is not the, the head, the bucket is efficiencies, right? You know, that's why we're, we're doing something like this.
I think there are efficiencies which are starting to get thought about in the town overall. And I, you know, I think we can, this is a good conversation to be having about.
And it sounds like the idea of like, holding the line on staff requests is, is kind of forcing that, figure out how to do it. Don't, don't just do what you're doing.
Is there a different way you, can we do it another way?
Yes.
If, if they can't do it another way, if they can't, or if they can't let another want or need go in order to have this, but it has to be a need, not a want. But then I think we can talk about it.
And that's easier to do within a department. Where you can show that, okay, we're, we're taking money we used to spend here and we're putting it in here. And by the way, now we, we, overall, we can spend even less.
Right.
That's easy to do. Across departments, that's a lot tougher to do because in this town, we don't have a mechanism set up for doing that.
Yes, that's right.
We need that mechanism. For instance, a facilities manager is something that's, that's across all the departments. But we really don't have a centralized location to do the analysis, to come in and say, if we, if we spend an extra $15,000 salary on this, we're going to, we're going to save $75,000 in maintenance costs. And that's what we need.
What is that mechanism?
Right.
I mean, we don't have it in this town.
We don't have it in this town.
So the priority would be figuring out what that mechanism is.
Yeah.
Because it's hard. I mean, we, we're all volunteers.
Yeah.
We're not here day to day. We don't know.
We, we can kind of do that retrospectively, but not prospectively.
Well, retrospectively works, I mean, you can, you can use history to, to look forward as well. And that's what we have to do right now. That's the only, because that's the only mechanism we have available to us.
Well, and, and you know, one of the things we've talked about is like the energy savings, right? Typically, that just gets absorbed, right? I mean, the street lights were.
And we never see it.
That money's gone, right?
It was a bucket truck request though.
Sure that those things are working. Right, but, but you know, like the school, there was energy efficiency. That money just disappears, right? I, I, I think part of it is, you know, also too, if we can track that sort of stuff better, then maybe we roll that into salary for, you know, instead of it just going into a bucket to, to, you know, and this isn't Pooh and Nathan's proposal, but it's, you know, maybe that goes into a bucket to help pay for the facilities manager who ultimately pays things back, you know what I, and I think one of the things that we're looking at now is fee structure, right? If, you know, maybe it's that, the fees have been low and, you know, if there really is a need, those, the fees for some of the departments, Board of Health, Concom, right? We may not be able to cover all of the hours, you know, based on those fees. But maybe even if we could supplement that some more, you know, so I think there's a lot of different things that we have to look at.
One caveat to that, is a sideline to another conversation, is we talked about at a high level, taking a look at revolving funds in this town. And, and, you know, we just had preliminary conversations and make, because we need to be able to track and quantify and understand, but what we don't want to do necessarily is add even more.
That's right. There's an inefficiency to that, right?
There's an efficiency in that. And then you're, for instance, the sticker one, you're, you've got 140,000, that's a maintain, that's, that's a number just goes across every year. But you're bringing in 49 and you're spending 49. So if you had that revenue go in the general fund and you appropriate that, you'd see it, they do, and then.
But we have to track.
Close that, that extra money that you can then, you know, spend on other things like a facilities manager. Same thing with taking all the budgets, line parts of each individual budget, putting it in a centralized maintenance thing. You would see, that history would start to create itself of what you took, you know, all this, whatever number that is, 100,000 or whatever. And then you'd see what you had at the end of the year. Are you over or under? Because right now, it's just shifting it within the, within the budget.
Right now, we don't know if their maintenance line is being spent on maintenance.
I mean, we can go back and look at the actuals, but it's hard.
That's hard.
You don't have, yeah, I, you don't have a great number that's just maintenance that's in there. But you, you go through a lot of the bills of who you regularly do for maintenance.
Yeah, but maintenance also, I mean, the fire department has, they have a maintenance budget, but they spend like 100,000 of it on their trucks. Well, that's not helping the building.
But you would pull that out of what?
I wouldn't want to take that out of, you know.
No, there's general municipal facility management.
You have then a line for them for vehicle maintenance and you have whatever would be building maintenance.
Right.
There would be a line that would be.
So we're talking about taking out only building maintenance when people, so it would.
Never makes sense and it's probably not all going to be perfect.
It's not very perfect.
No, it's going to take time to.
Yeah. And I think, okay, so in terms of priorities, what I would say is that I think that overall, we want to have a target of a certain percentage of the value of the buildings in that maintenance fund. I don't know what that is. I think the, the architects say 3%. But, so.
And the amount of money we've been spending.
To get to there.
Has been vastly less than 3%.
Yes, yes.
And that's why we're making up for the trouble.
So, so we could start by taking out this little bit of maintenance.
And we've talked about taking excess free cash and creating a capital stabilization fund so that we can deal with.
That's another great idea.
So that's something we hear and we're going to, we're going to work with Kim to set that up.
Yeah, exactly. Because I've been, I've been asking for that for a couple of years.
It smoothes it out.
It does.
We did that, we essentially did that with the high school project, but we've kind of come off that. Now we're back to a free cash standpoint where we want to have a specific target each year. And if we're above it, or if we have receipts coming higher, it goes to a stabilization fund.
Yes, and that is good because that's, we need to be able to smooth those bumps out.
And it'll smooth the tax.
And that will keep the tax.
So you're not.
So we're.
Weird thing, the other odd thing with our budget compared to other towns is we have this, a lot of our budget is determined by our, the high school, which is determined by our allocation. So this year, it's working in our favor.
That's right.
But it might not next year.
But it might not next year.
That's a swing that.
We have to also be careful of that.
That's right.
That's right.
But like Scott says, if you, if you have a swing where you have, you know, children there and that, then you take that differently than you would plan for next year and put it into something.
We'd say, well, next year it's.
Next year, you bank it to pay it forward, basically.
That's right. Because we don't.
And then maybe you don't.
What we don't want to do is just ratchet the taxpayer. It's up 4%, 0%. So we want to, we want to do the best of our ability, have a plan, smooth it out. And if we have a, if we have a, a good year for some reason, for some event.
Right.
We're not just, hey, guess what? Your taxes are.
That's right.
We want to, we want to think about, because if we do that this year, next year, when the allocation slips, slips the other way, then it's a big.
We can use some of that.
Part of that's what we look at is how do we, how do we manage the long term.
Because they'll, they'll remember the increase, but they won't remember the decrease.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Absolutely. But we also can't squander the money.
That's right.
When we have, when we have those savings. We really have to be very careful about planning what we do with that. And not just absorb it and, you know.
Yeah. And it's tracking it too, right? In terms of what those savings are and ensuring, because I was actually thinking about that as we're discussing it. It's like, we have this question, you know, what efficiencies are you going to, you know, you potentially could do this year? We never go back the next year and say, oh, you wrote that on the pa, piece of paper. What did you do about it, you know, last year, right? And, but that's the whole aspect of, you know, kind of driving that through with regards to that.
And that's, I mean, that, well, it doesn't have anything to do with taxes. It's the, I mean, the, the going to the aggregated power. We now have a number.
Yes.
How much we saved by doing that.
As a town.
As a town. As town resident. Unfortunately, the town buildings didn't benefit from it, but the, but residents certainly did.
Yeah.
And the solar, like the solar project.
Right.
We need to follow, what is that generating and then that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I'm trying to think.
Yeah. But do we want to, just quickly in terms of, because I think what helps for us also is your kind of thoughts on the, the warrants that are kind of coming through, because that will be obviously kind of factored in our conversations. So the last one that Tim sent, I think the big one was the maintenance was $499. And then I think there's a proverbial high school parking lot. 800 there.
Yet to vote on that first.
We do.
We do.
Wait, 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 okay. Jerry.
So the.
Wait, Jerry, yeah.
The maintenance warrant, I, actually, I have, I have the latest numbers here.
Okay. Is that the one sent out this afternoon?
Oh, yeah, well, because we added the police.
So the number we're up to is, is 807,000.
807?
807.
807 for maintenance.
237.
That's a big number.
13 cents.
But we might be giving you 850K back.
Well, there you go.
There are, there are several.
Well, we're not spending it.
Several caveats, if, if people, I have several copies of this, if people don't have them. There are several caveats here. We don't have a number for repairing the salt shed yet. There are a couple items for the fire department that have to do with heat pumps and hot water systems that are eligible through Green Communities. So it's possible that anywhere from 0 to 100% of those could be funded by grants.
Are these, any, by any chance?
Yeah, the same grant that we just said we're not going to go for.
No, it, it would be in the next.
The following year.
Yeah, but we, I mean, that's, we have a three-year window on the warrant article, so.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay, all right. Because, see, that's part of the, the thing, you see?
Yep.
And the, the library chiller might possibly be part of that as well.
It's not in there now.
But it's not in there now.
That's correct. Oh, it's not in the warrant.
807.
807.
Oh, the chil, the library chiller is in.
Is.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, so I, so the point is that of the 807, some of it could be reimbursed down the line.
Well, and, and the other, the other point to make is that, the, the problem that we deal with all the time is we, we have this list of things that need to get done. And.
Can you do them all in one year?
Well, we, we try not to do them all in one year. We try to put things off as, as makes sense to do. But when we're looking at, like at the library, their, their roof has a lot of problems. And if they don't get addressed, it will affect the lifetime of the building. So if we put it off, then the leaky gutters will erode the bricks and, and it will be a bigger problem next year.
Right.
And then sometimes like a.
So on your list, are you, the 800, 807,000, is that a set of priorities that you have put in some kind of order?
Well, these are.
Kind of most critical.
More for next year.
These are the high priority, high priority items we selected out of a much longer list of things that are waiting to happen.
But if you're waiting for other grant money and you know you won't do them all in one year, do you do 400 this year and 400 next year?
Well, but, I mean, for some of these, we may not, we may not be able to wait for grant money.
But for the purpose of the taxpayer, we say, we hope to get a grant, but we have to.
Not count on that, right? We have to.
We have to present it as not having the grant. It's like we've done in the past.
Right. And, and so are, in your opinion or the group's opinion, this, these are the items that you would say we really must do in this next fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, and again, could, could we put something off? Well, I mean, you can cross your fingers and put it off and, and hope that it doesn't.
That's right.
Well, that's what I'm thinking about, the school elevator, right? That's a good example of.
Also too though, with some of these grants, are we, are we maxing them out? I mean, are we, you know, like for a chiller unit, right? So maybe we can get it, maybe we can't. But do we have other chiller units that we can apply for, say, two? Even though it's not at the end of its lifespan per se, you know, which ours appears to be 25 to 50 years.
You know, all of our chileries need to go. Every single building we have.
Yeah, so that's the thing. But I mean, you know, if one's, you know, two years out, why don't we apply for grants now? You know, I mean, kind of just max out. But are we really maxing out all our grant opportunities? I mean, you know, and I know.
What we're maxing out are the people who can write them.
Well, this is it.
We had a grant writer in our list of wants that we decided not to support.
Right, but, but was that a stupid decision, right? Because, because could we have maxed those things out? Like, you know, I, like, I have no idea what opportunities are out. I mean, I know some, but the vast majority of them I don't.
If you had somebody dedicating money to that.
I'm just becoming familiar with the Green Community stuff.
You think of the return on that.
My understanding is that in order to get the grant, you have to, you have to get a, a third party to, to put it together. And it gets evaluated based on the energy savings. So just replacing a chiller because it's failing doesn't get you anything unless you replace it with a more efficient chiller.
Right.
Which may be more efficient, but may be more expensive.
Right, well, yeah.
Like getting grants on your house when you do the ready partners or.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, and that's the thing. I mean, it's more efficient, but it's more expensive. So does it pay for itself?
Well, but, but one, we, we can.
Well, if you can get the grant.
We, we can get some synergy. If, if we fund the cost of replacing the comparable unit and the Green Communities funds the cost of making it a, an air pump unit that will save the town $5,000 a year.
Right.
That's a good deal if, if we can make it happen.
Right, if we can make it happen, yeah, yeah.
So going back to the, the warrants, so obviously, maintenance, big, big item. I just, you, Tim, you just sent me something with some detail around complete streets. It's another 250, right?
Yeah.
More than likely, that's, that's the engineering estimate.
Right. So half of the 500 is what would go into the warrant.
I planned to bid early next year, so we'll know definitively what the.
So if I place over the 250, I'm at 1.9 million, including your adjustment there.
And warrants.
And warrants.
Wait.
I think it's actually like 200. Not that that's a huge difference, but, but it was.
So I have 807 for the maintenance, 800 for high school parking lot.
That would be only be our portion though.
Oh, that's right. I have to figure our portion of, sorry, I threw that whole thing. 20, quarter, so 200.
250.
So it's 250, so there's a million there. A million two, it's probably about the same number as I have down there. It's about a million three.
Some of this would be debt, I'm assuming some of it would be debt funded if it passed. Which just, just pushes it on.
From an annual standpoint, just spreads it out.
Yep.
It's not hitting you all.
Mm-hmm.
Cranberry Bog. Greeno, are those CPA, is Greeno, is that?
Is that the dam?
Is that taking the dam or?
Is that CPA, is that gonna be, is there gonna warrant, or is that, are you looking at CPA funds, or what's the latest?
CPA before the warrant.
Does it look like we could use, have you talked to CPA at all about it?
Yeah.
Let's not sit on that CPA money, spend it if we, I mean
There's some grant opportunities to that as well, that we have.
I just know, that's a big number, right? Like, that's a big project, but we think, okay.
We haven't had the time to pursue it.
Right. Yep.
But CPA would be
I believe so, yeah.
Would be able
Yeah, because we explored it, yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's not that they wouldn't support, it doesn't matter, I mean, but they might not be allowed to do some of these things because you can't do repairs, but they can do this or that, or the, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, that was allowable.
So, was there anything else that was fairly substantial? I have a lot of little ones here on my list that, it came from Tim, that was about a month, a month back. But I don't know if there's any other updates for anything else besides Jerry's
What about, so, you have about 300, 400,000 for capital budget again, like cherry pickers and
Long-term caps?
Long-term caps?
Yeah, so, we met last week, we have a little over 700,000 in requests in looking at those items. Yeah, we're, essentially, the, at least the initial guideline's gonna be flat, and then we'll lean through that one, because I think there's a number of things in there. I think the biggest new adds, DPW had, there's a carryover request from last year for a bucket truck, which we had discussed last year. There's a request for a roll-off truck, which is 200,000. I think, even if you were in favor of that, I think that would have to be a separate warrant article. It's my, my opinion in terms of, that's a big number to put into a long-term caps.
That one seems to me like, that's all transfer station, seems to me we should be able to apply our, some of our fees to that.
There's, from a capital, Gary had provided a schedule of
Well, I mean Yes, I mean, because that would be half of it, right there.
Right.
I mean, he, he does a lot with, with a little, and he's very good about working with what he gets. But he does have equipment needs coming up
Yeah, he does, I know.
Beyond this year, so, I mean, looking at that in terms of how we address the equipment needs in addition to the salt shed over the next few years is important. The other important thing to ask this committee is, there's a bunch of recurring expenses that we're looking at moving into the operating budget because they're not really capital items.
That's right.
All for it.
The second piece is, are you in favor of proposing the bylaw amendment that would essentially eliminate long-term caps and have finance committee essentially, in addition to the warrant article for the operating budget, would propose a warrant that would include the long-term capital items? There's a lot of overlap between committees right now. I think both committees, I don't, we haven't taken a formal position, but people seem in favor.
That's on your list.
Want to stop, hold?
Which one is it?
I think we're, it's, yeah.
We talked about it for special town meeting, but we held off on it for reasons.
Yes, no, I think you certainly have support from this board for that. I have already, you know, when I first came on, I was already questioning the
Why, it was different, broken up.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, the whole thing, and it's, first of all, it really should be your committee, not our committee. Because it's, you know, which gets over that hump of, originally, FinCom members, in fact, FinCom members are still not supposed to be on any other committee that had anything to do with money.
Changed the bylaw.
So, and we did change the bylaw around that, but, except for the long-term caps. And really, what we should have done is say, long-term caps really is your committee, and it's not a separate committee, and it's, you know, so I totally agree, we need to streamline that.
Practically, I think when we, when we move the recurring expenses into the budget, you're gonna be looking at 150 to 200,000 dollars in miscellaneous items. Anything larger than that becomes a separate warrant, so having a separate committee and having the departments have to meet with the separate committee.
And, and, and if it has to do with facilities, you're gonna
Yes.
Take that over to facilities.
And if it's a big enough item, it becomes its own warrant, so it's really a small number of
So, one, I have, I have one question about the, the members of the long-term cap subcommittee of FinCom.
Yes.
One question is, I think it's necessary that they be allowed to be appointed by people that aren't on FinCom.
Why is that?
There would be no long-term caps committee.
There wouldn't be a long-term caps committee anymore.
The long-term cap subcommittee of FinCom.
I wouldn't even know if it would be an official subcommittee. I think we would just recommend a long-term cap warrant.
Yeah.
It's useful to have some, some people from other town departments, like the school committee, have substantial input into long-term caps.
But you know, Jerry, if we're spending 200,000 on long-term caps and spending millions on the school separately, it just seems like, you know, redundant.
Okay.
Well, as part of the budget, I mean, we spend a fair amount of time
Yeah.
With the, I mean, we can talk about it more, but
Unless people feel from the schools that they're not getting an adequate audience in front of the finance committee for everything they need.
Or they just wanna spend more time.
Well, I believe
Because we asked a question, right? It's in our questionnaire, it's like, you know, in terms of the different needs that they have, operating expense. So, it becomes one conversation is what it ends up being, like, opposed to separate ones.
The way Concorde does it, or at least the way they did it last time I looked at it, first of all, they have a FinCom that has a million members.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, and there is a long-term cap subcommittee of FinCom that deals with long-term caps issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, we barely were able to fill the seven, it took us a couple of years to get to the seven.
Yeah, in any event, I think whatever we do, it requires a bylaw change, so that would be a warrant article and
Well, we are reviewing the bylaw as we speak, in fact, when, wasn't that on an upcoming
List of bylaw amendments, potential bylaw amendments.
Yes, and don't we have that on an upcoming meeting soon? Wasn't, in January?
Yeah.
Town council making a presentation? So, yeah, this is the time to do it, folks.
We didn't get that, we did this, 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 this.
So, you certainly have our support about that.
Yeah, I think ultimately, I don't think
Just makes all kinds of sense.
I think we would wanna have you recommend that, I don't know that we would wanna
It will be coming from us.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense to me, but I think a third party should
As I said, we are reviewing the bylaws, all the bylaws, right now, and we'd certainly come onto that.
Yep.
Yeah, we are. All the, all the procedures
Plugging away at it.
Well, the
Two or three at a time.
Well, that, those are, the bylaws that we're looking, that's, that's the policy and by policy. But we'll do the bylaws in kind of one swell foop, you know, but
One swell foop. It'll be swell.
Swell, that's right.
I gotta Google what a foop is, though.
A foop, that's right. The swell we got, I'm not sure about the foop, the new word. I think this has been a good conversation.
No, I, I agree, I agree.
I don't know if there's anything outstanding, at least from FinCom, because I did post, so, from a FinCom perspective, was there anything that we missed in terms of
But
We discussed yesterday, did you feel that there's anything that we wanna cover off on this evening?
No, I'm still worried about, you know, 1. how many million in warrant articles? And how much for, you know, 700, you know, and for the LTC, the long-term, okay, will it go to 400? But even, you got those other things that were recurring things that you're gonna put in the operating, but they're still in the oper, now that you're gonna
We're gonna look at them, don't worry.
Are you going to swell the operating budgets by that amount? Or are you gonna ask people to absorb them in their operating budgets now?
We're all taxpayers.
Okay, well, so that's, so that's, I'm, I'm just saying, that's what I'm worried about.
But you're not alone, Kate.
Yeah.
I, I want to know, I'm known, I know I'm No, I can't sleep alone, I can't sleep at night because a puppy keeps on
I think the, the trickiest of all these is the warrant, because ultimately, at the end of the day, all we can do and all you can do is take a position.
Yeah.
And it's up to the town then, which is ultimately, all this is just up to the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, but I think, I agree with you, but I also think all of us
Yeah.
Need to take a leadership role in not just putting it forward, but to, you were partly addressing this, right? By talking about how we explain things, and I think we need to do it in advance, as well as during the warrant. And I know, you don't always reach everybody beforehand, but still, I think, I think we, we need, all need to be prepared to speak
We need to look at how we
For our, the things we think are really important and
Especially for the big warrants, how can we fund these things? Does it all have to be, is there some stuff we can do with debt? I mean, we have to look at some of those mechanisms, so we're not
Yes.
Trying to do 30 years of maintenance and put it all in a year.
Right.
We can spread that over 20 years, then let's spend it over 20 years.
Exactly.
There's something that can, that won't get done, that you don't wanna hold up that, that you'll vote
So, is that something
I can tell you, there's another
Yeah, we'll look, we look at
Working on
We look at funding sources.
Yeah, we're looking at funding sources.
Yeah, and, and over ti, over what period of time, yeah?
It depends on the equipment, but you don't wanna make next year's taxpayer
Right.
Carry the burden of 30 years of maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, you have to look, well, we're making up for maintenance, we're gonna push it forward, and then it, the other problem is if you approve something, spend all the money next year, then everyone resets the following year. But when you have the debt on the books, you know, that, that expense is still there, and so, we gotta look at that.
Well, we
Still there, and it builds every time you add more.
But you don't forget those projects, at least, it's not like sprinting.
That's right.
And then, the, the other thing, of course, that's looming, is that master plan.
Yes.
And we're a little worried about what wonderful, great ideas they will be coming up with, and I don't, you know, wanna discourage them, but most of them will, I'm assuming, will have price tags attached to them, so, I am concerned about not, you know, kinda shooting our wad now and having something in reserve so that we can be kinda happy about these ideas and not say
Your debt will fall off, I think it's five or six years down the road, that it's a six, it's a dip, that would be the time.
It doesn't feel like there's much
So, I have a 10-year projection out.
Okay.
Of the debt, which will show you
A lot of the misses.
If you go down, where you get a, a low, that if you wanna build it back, that would be the time.
That's
So, we should start about, start thinking about things we wanna spend a lot of money on?
Five years.
Five or six years from now, wouldn't somebody else be making the decisions?
Yes.
Well, my hope, though, is that they're also looking at town, how can we manage growth?
Yeah, that's the thing.
The rotary
That's right.
The 250 toll on the rotary will be great. Every
Right. Can even do easy pass.
Every road, every road into Carlisle, right? Yeah.
Well, one of two things, right? You get the revenue, or you improve, improve our traffic situation around there, right?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna do some of it with
Complete streets, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, if we can afford complete, complete streets.
Yeah.
Very good.
We'll have to see those bits.
Yeah, and that's another big safety issue, too.
And then, do we jeopardize our grant on that if we don't go forward, or do we have some time? Do we have a deadline on doing complete streets?
Technically, the deadline is the end of June, but we can extend it if we've got an active project.
Right, so, by June, we'll, we'll know whether we're doing this project or not.
Yeah. Well, this is helpful?
Yes.
So, we'll, we'll convene next week to, to talk a little bit more about essentially the budget guidance, but we'll keep Guidelines, sorry.
Guidelines, right.
We'll, we'll keep close in touch, don't necessarily maybe have to set up another special meeting, because we wanna try to set up the letter by the end of the year. But we'll make sure that we keep you apprised. And so, I kept all the numbers off, and I was very successful, all the way up past an hour of talking about numbers. But just to give you a little bit of a sense, you know, I think, given the FY '21 request, if you just kind of add them all up, operating budget
I'm not saying we're gonna do that.
You're not saying we're gonna do that? 1.2% before COLA and long-term debt and long-term caps. So, just the, the core operating
It's a better starting point than previous years.
This is for
Partly
Operating budget.
All of the
What I wanna know is this, just town, or town and schools?
Town and schools.
Town and schools.
Partly that, just, so we don't think that we have room to spend on this, partly that's driven from the regional school
A decrease.
A decrease, because of the, the shift.
Change in population.
If we didn't have that change, it would have added another 0.6%, so we'd be 1.8. So, it was a fairly, we had a minor decrease, Concorde had obviously an increase, but the core operating growth, expense growth was 2.6. It's just that they, they bore all of it, we actually
Yeah.
It's not bad, it's best before the guideline, it's not a bad start.
In fact, that's not, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And thank you for pushing the warrants earlier.
Yes.
And we look forward to
Give a lot of people heartburn, but I think it was worth it.
Yes.
I think last year, again, we've been drifting later and later to finalize things, so we, the more we can do this year to lock things down so we can get the warrant book out, so we can have these conversations.
Yeah.
We really have to push on that, because I think town meeting's a little bit earlier, and it takes time for us, once everything's finalized, to put together all the numbers in the warrant letter. So, we'll be talking about that timeline, but the more we can kind of stop the conversations and make some decisions, the better. Thank you very much.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I think that's it. Unless somebody has some liaison, who done everything else.
I had to, because we would try to hesitate, and we've had access
We're expecting that we're
Could absorb them, I mean, we had to prioritize, but when I gave the information
Oh, I'm sorry, um
Yeah, 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 okay.
Well, we did talk about you guys, about the changing inception, and since this, if it's gonna be rapid and neutral
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We do, we usually, we've been around like, I don't know, you know
I didn't get it all.
5,000 and 15,000, at least a year.
All right.
Wow, yeah, okay, well, why didn't, okay, I guess I was expecting you to do it, the public input. When they were here, okay, I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding.
For next year.
Yeah. It's from the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs.
Yeah.
Could be significant
Who's that?
It's very broad project.
Oh, and she's not here tonight?
Yeah, that is.
Yeah.
No, I didn't see that, I didn't, I just saw the deadline.
Here's, here's copies, you could cast a
We got copies here.
They're on the 14th.
But we were also told to come tonight and make first changes.
Yeah, no, I know that.
Yeah. Um, well
Sure.
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 By all means.
Yeah, we haven't closed the meeting.
No, we haven't.
We haven't adjourned officially.
So, I think many of you already know what I'm going to say, or at least some of us. So, we've been communicating with Helen, who are, who are liaison, with Lynn Lipinski, and we've also gone before the personnel board. One of the biggest challenges for the Health Department is that we do not have too deep health agent capabilities, which is required by the state. And so, what this means is always having a fully trained person available who can respond quickly and effectively during a, an emergency event. That's required, and several months ago, we had proposed a new position to achieve this, and that was going to increase the fiscal year '21 budget. So, in light of the freeze on the new positions, we went back and decided to develop a strategy for an internal reorganization that would allow us to proceed with that position within the guideline budget. And we're planning to present this in more detail at the January 14th meeting. So, what we're planning to do is, we've actually started, is to reexamine the Health Department services, special services, and the duties that we're obligated to provide. And what we've, what we are aware of is that in the past five years, those have changed dramatically. Just the nature of the work that we're doing and the special services that we're providing have changed quite a bit. So, that will inform our reorganization. And what we believe is that by streamlining our operation and refining the special service fees to accurately capture the true cost of those special services that were provided, we believe that we can sustain the higher level position and still meet the level budget guideline. So, that's what we are proposing.
Yeah, great.
Already incentivized a lot of reorganization.
You know, we, like I said, the biggest issue is that we are not meeting the state requirements. So, we don't really have the luxury of doing nothing, at least
Right.
We agree on that. And I'm not saying it will be easy, and I'm not saying it will be a painless, you know, to either our department or to the town, but I do think it's necessary. So, we'll come again on the 14th, and I guess in the meantime, we'll just send an email to the FinCom and, or ask Lynn to share it more broadly.
I would say you clearly have the support of the, you know, the board for this initiative.
Yeah, no, I, you know, you can actually take a vacation day now.
No, but, I mean, but there is, it does involve some detail.
Yeah.
And it will affect, you know, staffing hours and that, so you need to understand that, what, what the real impacts will be.
Yeah, so, is this something that you're gonna be doing sort of through the board of health with you, Linda? Are you gonna involve some of the staff that provides some of these
I'm not sure of the question.
Well, just, who, who's, who's the team that's, that's working on the reorganization plan? Partly, I was thinking about
Councilor, treasurer.
Yeah.
And actually, years ago, I developed with Linda and with our, was it Judy at the time? We developed a very comprehensive spreadsheet of the special services and the, you know, the special permits. And so, we know that the nature of what goes into septic permits, for example, has changed quite a bit. So, we're going to go back and reconstruct the, we have a spreadsheet that outlines all the tasks and the estimated time for each person involved in that.
Yeah.
And then that rolls up into a fee. So, we're going to look at our fee structures, and we will be working, Linda communicates, you know, on this with her two assistants. And so, we get the input from the people actually doing the work, and then we also report back to the board at our board meeting.
And the request has gone to Personnel Board, and they have graded it.
Oh, good.
And we will be accommodating the, what they think, because the point is, we wanna make this a more responsible position, capable of taking my place. So, we'll have Health Agent One, Health Agent Two. So we'll have Health Agent One, Health Agent Two. And that's what the state is looking for, and when you were talking about your priorities, it occurred to me that we don't really talk about emergency preparedness, but you're talking about an aging population. Carlisle is a very small town. We have very limited resources of our own. It's critical for Carlisle to play a role in, the state created these public health regions, and we've taken an active part in it, and we not only get funding from them, but that's who we would call upon during an emergency, because we don't have the resources. And I'm thinking of the Merrimack Valley and what happened there, and...
The deaths.
Right. They, they called on, you know, other members of the region who came and helped them with sheltering, with food, with transportation, things like that. Carlisle needs to play an active role and participate in that, and those are the deliverables that we're trying to meet with this second position.
Terrific.
Yeah, sounds fantastic.
So in advance of the January meeting, will you, will we be able to look at something a little bit ahead of time?
Yeah, we'll try very hard.
Which is good. I know, it's a lot of work, and good for you all for taking it on.
On the 14th, you want to talk about the mosquito control warrant article, too?
Oh, I was afraid you'd ask about that.
Oh, no, it's not the thing anymore.
Okay, so, I had asked him to put a placeholder on, because the state is asking all communities to be a member of a mosquito control program, which we are not. All of our surrounding towns cost 31. And so, the Board of Health instructed me to start exploring options, and we are a border town, so we could join Central Middlesex Control or Eastern. I did get a proposal from Eastern, it would be about $30,000 annually, but that would include helicopter spraying. If we just did, like, larva sighting of catch basins, maybe wetlands, surveillance might be around 16,000 is an initial $6,700 membership initiation.
Oh, I see. So this is, so that's the East Middlesex mosquito?
Eastern Middlesex, yeah.
So it's 30K for the first year, and then 16?
Well, 30 if you wanted helicopter spraying now.
Oh, no, we don't, okay.
So, we don't...
Saying like 16 without that.
16 without that, okay.
Would the 16 include the initiation fee?
But that, there was an initial 6,700 in that...
Oh, plus, so that...
No, no, in that 6,700.
In the 30?
No, in the 6...
Now, I don't know if that, what the ongoing membership fee is, they didn't break that out, so...
That'd be good to know.
At least you'll have some numbers, and then, but it, it requires a town meeting vote to join.
It's a requirement, state requirement that we join this.
Last time, a town meeting voted it down, big time.
Many times they voted.
One of the, one of the reasons that we're putting this forward is that if there was a triple E, you know, diagnosed in Carlisle, and we were not affiliated, we might be very, and if the state ordered that we spray, for example, and we were not affiliated with one of the districts, we might have very high time spraying, or we might have to pay a great deal.
Okay, so this is sort of an insurance policy.
Right, and again, it's an initiative by the state, it's not a requirement yet, they are going to try to legislate it, but unlikely they'd get that done this year.
So it's not a requirement yet, someday?
Not yet.
Okay.
But then, you want to look at the residents, I mean, the real, the real goal is protecting the health of the residents.
Definitely, think about, right, overall.
Next year, we'll have no triple E anywhere in the state.
So, I guess we'll keep the placeholder until the board makes the decision whether to move it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, great, okay. Is this from?
This is from David. This, he sent it to me, but there wasn't time to respond this year anyway, so I didn't have it.
Yes, I saw this, too.
Show the preparedness program.
And I think, I don't know, when are we going to, what, which agenda should we put our, you know, maybe revisit our requests for personnel, in the light of the conversation that we just had with FinCom?
Yeah, well, and, you know, and also, too, I think, you know, like David presented, and I just asked him to clarify, you know, he said, he talked about 28,000, and he came back with, you know, 10 from the chest, six from the other grant, and then, you know, we could slide those other two warrant articles, right? He'd be willing to...
Get rid of the 5,500, because frankly, I don't think we need that, that cross-term contract.
No, you know, so I mean, now all of a sudden, you're looking at, what, 1,500 bucks? You know, and you go, yeah, I mean, that's basically what it comes down to.
Is that what he said?
No, 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 16 minus 55, so 11...
No, it's 28 minus, 28 minus 16, minus another 10, 5 for the two warrant articles. So it brings 12 down to...
10, 5, with, uh, transport, oh, the transportation voucher.
The last two warrant articles.
Oh, yeah, that's 10,000.
Right.
Right, so, we had 16, he already had 16 of the 28, which left 12, and so we're talking 2,000.
Yeah.
Right, I agree, this is, but you see, this is...
But it's getting them to think...
The only reason it's happening is because, right, he has no war.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's where the creativity comes from.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, and it, and it's hard, because, you know, like, there are these grants available, you know, and...
Well, yeah, it's so interesting, isn't it, how this is...
Suddenly, suddenly, there's grants, there's fee, we, we're getting fee...
There's another way to do it.
Thing, they're finding a different way to do things.
Well, there's no...
And we are too, we are too.
But that's doing them one year at a time.
Right, right.
I understand, I understand, but the thing is, that we've been asking for efficiencies for years, and nobody could come up with a single one.
Yeah.
So suddenly, this seems to be breaking...
Well, the, the big change in Board of Health is, this too-deep argument has never come up before.
Well, that's true.
And it wouldn't have come, this time Kathy hadn't brought it up, I think Kathy found it, and that's, and they quickly said, this is, this is the justification.
Okay, well, but it's a...
But, but then, you say, hey, how do I pay for it?
That's what women say, make us a case.
And they do, and they do.
And we've also been saying, because we've said it to CONSCOM and, and Planning Board as well, you know, the, the number two should really be able to fill the role of number one, and not completely, but at least enough where, if number one wants to take a vacation, we don't completely lose the function of that group.
And that's, that was, I think that's graded as seven, I think, out of Personnel Board? Yes.
Yes.
The number two spot?
The number two.
And then, and then, yeah.
Which is pretty high.
And then we get that succession, right? I mean, ultimately, they would be groomed to go into the next position.
And I think, I don't know where Madeline Blake is with her reorganization plan, but I think there's some...
She's moving along, yeah.
I think there's some merit to it, and that that will also give us some efficiencies.
Yes.
So, but we still, we still also have to think about our positions, because I think we need also to be thinking about, how can we do this, get the things that we need to get done in the town, done, without overdoing, you know, costing more than we should.
And things that can't be done by volunteers.
And things that can't be, and I, and I'll tell you, this, the grant writing cannot be, it's been done by volunteers, but they're all burnt out.
Yeah.
It is very onerous, because it's not just the application, it's all the reporting afterwards.
Right, right.
And it's all the boilerplate that sends...
Yes, so I think we do need, still need that function.
And it's also building relationships, right? It's like, this guy from EverSource being able to basically say, I think I can get, you know, the community, I mean, it's the same thing, right? When you have somebody that does grant writing and starts to know those networks, it, it's really help, it can, you know, you can move things through.
When I worked at a soft money research lab that brought in about 50 million a year, every Friday afternoon, we wrote a grant.
Oh, wow.
80% of which was boilerplate.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we even saw with complete streets, right? You know, the initial 40,000 or 30,000, whatever it was, that was basically a letter, to get 30,000 to pay somebody to put together a complete streets application. I mean, and granted, it took other effort and time, but, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, I mean, it, of course, now it's going to cost the town money, because they didn't give us the right amount of money, but, but still, I mean, it's, it's, one, it's a process that we wouldn't have even started, and two, it's 250,000 that's sitting there, here you go, you know, so you leverage it, right?
Look, you can solve the problem with the, with the complete streets deficit simply